I am Shannon Rutherford, the town planner. We, this is the town plan and zoning meeting for May 22nd. We will start with a roll call of commission members in attendance. I have Scott Halston.
Here.
Matt Hovner.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Ina St. James.
Here.
Uh, Mike Walsh.
Here.
James Ratcliffe.
Here.
Matthew Bandle.
Here.
I will note for the record that Patrick Carrier and Michael Graboulis are not in attendance this evening. Madam Chair, it's all yours.
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Ina St. James. Welcome to Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Meeting. Today is May 22nd. We are going to switch things up a little bit. Um, the first things that, first item that we're gonna handle is some old business. We'll go into new business and, and with public hearings. Uh, we do have a full agenda. We appreciate everyone coming in person, calling online. We're all volunteers here. We appreciate you voting for us. And uh, let's be kind to one another. But we're here because of you and for you. Um, let's read the legal notice first, Scott. Thank you.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid, in-person and online public hearing on Monday, May 22nd, 2023 at 7 o'clock PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Carrier Holdings Inc., application for six lot re-subdivision of Dominique's Court, with waivers and two lot subdivision with waivers of 114 Red Oak Hill Road, R30 Zone. Talco Construction, application for six lot subdivision of 222 Talcat Notch Road, R80 Zone. Bulwark LLC, application for change of zone from R to C1, special permit and site plan approval for construction of a self-storage facility, location on lots 8120 and 8122 Colt Highway, across from 242 Colt Highway. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at One Monteith Drive Town Hall Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website and on the screen. A copy of this proposal is online and on your screen as well, or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this fourth day of May 2023, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Ina St. James, Chair.
Thank you. Well done. All right. The first items are old business. Both items, uh, we need, um, to add our alternates as voting members. Uh, James and Mike, are you comfortable voting on both items?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, let's begin. So the first item is an application from Carrier Group Inc. for a 25 lot cluster subdivision on lots 8517 and 8518 Moraya Road. And uh, this is, um, an item we've been, um, hearing about for a while now. Um, this, uh, the public hearing has been closed on April 24th, um, so no public comment, um, will be heard. Uh, but we definitely, uh, need to deliberate, and if everyone is comfortable, make a decision. How do you feel, Matt, about, uh, making a decision on this project?
So quickly, Shannon, just to ask, this had to go to amendments to just make sure it was good to go. Is that, how, has that process happened?
Uh, correct. This was discussed with Inland Wetlands last Wednesday evening, and he.
Order the African-American history course will move fear theory. Now your life's in danger. So how dangerous is this for them?
Okay. A little confused. Okay. Yeah, I think we should be good. After three years, you think we had a hang of this?
Keeps it exciting.
No, I know. That's fine. It's another individual that's up. So, um, they keeps unmuting their microphone. I can boot them if I need to. Okay, so I apologize. You asked a very simple question, and we got sidetracked. So, uh, did this, the, correct. Um, you'll recall at the last meeting, the, I requested that the commission hold on a vote, that the town attorney, uh, in consultation with him, he agreed that out of, uh, to be cautious that this should go to Inland Wetlands to confirm, um, that their understanding is that the plan is, as it, as it has evolved, is consistent with the plan they approved, uh, last year with consi- conditions. Last Wednesday evening, uh, we had that meeting, uh, prior to the meeting. Um, the senior assistant town planner, uh, Bruce Seer, had shared with them and reminded them all about all the documents they had at the time of their approval, um, and their conditions, and then shared with them the full record for TPZ, all the plans, all of the, uh, technical reports and documents, including all the public correspondence was shared uh, in advance of the meeting. And then during the meeting, uh, he had shared an overlay to kind of step by step, discuss the changes and the plans that had taken place. And the commission did vote to confirm that the plan as it has evolved is consistent with their approval from, uh, last year and is consistent with, um, their thoughts on, with the conditions and the, uh, the plan. So they had no issue with how the plan had evolved.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah. No, I was gonna say, you know, no real change from my statement last time, uh, with this application.
Okay. And, uh, do you have any questions? Need additional information?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, great. Scott?
Yeah, very similar to Matt. I, I think I made my, my thoughts clear in the last meeting. I don't have any other questions. I feel like I'm ready to vote as well.
Liz?
I also feel I'm prepared to vote.
Okay. Nope, I know. Good, thank you. And now, James?
All set.
Okay, and Mike?
Also as well.
Okay, um, I am also all set. Um, I know that, uh, many residents voice concerns. Um, I feel that many of the concerns are not in our jurisdiction. All right, we have an inland wetland committee. You just heard an update from Shannon. I would went back to inland wetland, and the vote is consistent. Um, when I think of, you know, as, as a resident, right, you know, for TPZ, we care about stormwater. Inland wetland cares about groundwater. I know that as a resident, if you go in your backyard after a rainstorm, it's, it's hard to tell, right? Is it stormwater? Is it groundwater? But I think that all the information that was, all the research that was done, all the information that was shared by, um, the applicant, all the experts, the validation from the engineering staff, all the responses, um, I feel that, um, we have all the information, and, um, I'm ready to vote also. So, we have a document. We have, we have a resolution that was drafted. We have a resolution. If we decide to approve, we have a resolution if we decide to deny. It's very important that, um, each, uh, member votes individually, and we kind of have an idea why you're deciding, um, why you're deciding, what you're deciding. So if you can just give us a little bit more language, it'll be good. Um, Shannon, do we read the resolution, or?
You certainly can. End of the record. Yep, I can put it up on the screen if you'd like.
Okay. The entire thing?
You don't have, it can be as displayed on the screen, and it was, uh, it was posted on the website too, in totality.
Okay. I'm looking at Mr. Secretary. I'm just kidding, but that's okay.
Um, we'll need a, you'll need a motion in a second.
Yeah, to continue.
Discuss, right? You discuss what direction.
Okay.
The commission's.
That's a good, that's a good idea. So, um, we need a motion in a second. I think for the motion in a second, we should, um, do it in affirmative. And then if things change, we can change that. Would like to make a motion?
I will, if I, hey, do I, I guess, should I just start reading what?
No, you don't. So I would just use the, uh, I would just use the agenda item to start.
Yeah.
Uh, where is it? Okay. Um, Liz Sanford, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the application from Town, excuse me, Carrier Group, Inc., application for the 25 lot cluster subdivision on lots 8517 and 8518 Moraya Road.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All right. So which way is this gonna go? So we have two resolutions, um. Shannon, with, I'm just trying to make it as clear as possible.
Go through and discuss, um, again, it would be nice, it, now that there is a motion in a second.
Yeah.
Some of the reading on the record.
Sure, and then we can read in.
Favorable, and then if you want.
Okay.
If that's the direction that it's, that's the affirmative that it made.
Yeah.
Or discuss other reasons, and then discuss the conditions.
Yep. All right.
Continuing the affirmative.
So, Matt?
Yeah, I'll start. Again, this is really a summary of what I said at the last meeting, why I think this application should be accepted. You know, this application, and for me and my role on this commission, is to really judge this application based on the rules and regulations that are set forth. Not necessarily to make new rules or ignore rules. This isn't a zone change, right? It's a residential neighborhood and a residential zone and cluster development. So, based on those parameters, and again, then I have to just hear what the public testimony is, right? And information I receive as a commissioner on, on this, on this board. And for me, again, I, I mentioned this last week, there were sort of three buckets for me, right? Stormwater runoff, traffic, and, um, wildlife and conservation. You know, again, for stormwater runoff, again, based on the evidence presented to me by the applicant, and, and confirmed by our town staff engineers, right? This application meets our regulations. And again, also deep, the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection also signed off on this during construction activities. To traffic, right? Again, based on evidence presented to me that this applicant has met a regulations, and, and I agree with the testimony received that, you know, while those 50 cars, and you can assume two cars per house, you know, most of those cars will not be coming in at the same time. And, and I anecdotally, and I said this last time, is, you know, I live in a subdivision with over 50 houses, and cars are not coming and going at the same time. So I kind of have to weigh that as well. And then three, you know, the biggest one for me really was the wildlife and conservation, right? And, you know, protecting our natural resources, for me here in Farmington, and while a lot of us live here, is the balance of the natural resources, right, with the sort of suburban feel and sort of modern development. And again, based on everything I heard by, including by deep, their review of the natural diversity database and the REMA Ecological Services, again, in my opinion, shows this application meets our standard, and I could not find any evidence otherwise. So again, that's, so in closing, as, and as earlier said, I'm not a commissioner on inland wetlands, nor am I on the town council. The town council, who has the right to purchase land in town, we can't purchase land in town, right? Should the town council maybe have looked at purchasing this property? Maybe. Should they have been more creative in trying to find a solution? Maybe. But again, for me and this commission, based on, based on the evidence, I think, you know, we should accept this application. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Scott?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna echo a lot of what, what Matt said, and I said this at the last meeting. This is, this role maybe is a little different even than I expected when I was elected three and a half years ago. Um, it's not about what I like and don't like for the town. It's about enforcing the regulations that have been set up for the town, and you know, this is a residential zone. The cluster subdivision is designed for exactly this type of scenario. Um, I just, you know, looking, I certainly heard the concerns that were, um, presented over the, the several sessions of public hearing we had. And like Matt said, I just, I don't see anything here to say that it should not be approved. Um, it, that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
You're good, Shannon. Okay. All right, we'll keep going. Yeah, a couple of things, just to thank you, my couple. One thing to keep in mind as we finish the rotation is, uh, um, any conditions that you may want to add, right? Yeah. Liz, go ahead.
Okay. Should I address con- conditions now, or?
I would like to know which way, yeah, you're heading.
Once I get there. Okay. Um, I sense a, a theme. Uh, I too feel that in carrying out our role in plan and zoning, um, we are looking to see whether this application meets the rules and regulations. And, uh, it is, um, in, it is residential, in a residential area. We're not talking about some large commercial operation or something like that. There are, it, it meets the requirements that I see. We've counted, we've had lots of experts. We've heard lots of, um, input from both neighbors and experts and both sides, plus the own, our own town staff, which I have immense faith in their decision, or their abilities. And I feel that it, it is right for approval, and it would, it will preserve large amount of open space, which is a win for the town. So, okay.
Thank you. James?
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna echo pretty much every, everything everybody else said as well. Um, I think the, the thing that I want to make sure I haven't, I haven't really had a chance to talk, because I was an alternate, right? Um, we were elected to be objective, right? So I think that that was, that's the biggest thing that I'm thinking about at this point, is just following the regulations, following the rule of law, um, that we have set in forth, uh, set forth here in town. Um, we heard a lot of emotional testimony, um, from the neighbors and, and from, from everybody here, um, lengthy meetings. Um, but we still have to remain objective, keeping that emotion at the door. Um, and I heard a lot of testimony. You know, first of all, we got the inland's wetlands approval that kind of checked my environmental concerns. Whether or not I agree with that decision doesn't matter. Um, the DEP as well, um, coming in and, and, um, with a, with positive testimony as well. Um, and just a very thorough, thoughtful application. After all, this is private property. Um, if, and to Matt's point, if the town had opportunity to purchase it and, and, and did so, then we wouldn't be here. Um, and that's, again, not in our purview, but, so that's where I'm, where I'm at. I think we should, we should accept, um, with, uh, conditions. My one condition that I might want to speak about is, um, one concern that I had was the, um, the runoff of, um, chemicals. If we can find some way to work that into the verbiage with regards to HOA, um, following through on their commitment. Um, I would like to add that in, because that was one of my primary concerns.
Okay, I'm going to let Mike, um, weigh in, and then, uh, let's look at the conditions. All right, Mr. Walsh?
Um, so, really don't have much to add, because I think a lot's been covered. Um, I will reiterate a little bit of what James said, you know? My opinion doesn't matter. I look at this very black and white, and we're looking at rules and regulations. And so because of that, I would also vote to accept the application.
Thank you, everyone. Um, we do make difficult decisions, right? This is definitely a, a difficult one. Um, I looked at the, uh, criteria that we use to evaluate our applications. Obviously, water is super important. What safeguards are we taking? Um, you know, we're, with, uh, this applicant, um, is, um, tested everything for 500 year storm versus 100. Uh, we have detention basins, we have water quality, quality units in them. Um, we'll talk about the condominium documents and pest control. Um, uh, we will have conservation easement, we have stormwater. Um, erosion control, uh, will be monitored. Obviously, uh, engineering, um, is, uh, comfortable minus some clerical things that they need to work out with the applicant. Um, I too feel that, um, it's a yes vote for me. Um, the one thing I wanted to add, and I know it's kind of a assumed, but, uh, Shannon, is it okay that we add that, um, one of the conditions is that, um, the applicant comply with town ordinances regarding stormwater? Or is that, do I with you? Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Um, what other conditions? So you mentioned, James, you mentioned, um, runoff. So you, we have, um, how many? We have eleven, right? Ten conditions. Uh, I don't want to, yeah, maybe I should read the resolution at this point and then do the.
Sure.
Conditions.
Yep.
Fine. Let me do that. Since we.
I don't know. I made the motion. Did you want me to do it, or whichever? You're.
I think it's fine if I do it, right?
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to you. Yeah, I, I would like to read this into the record. Um, and then, um, let's review each condition and add any others that you feel comfortable with. So this is the, uh, resolution. Whereas the Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission received an application for a special permit and subdivision for 25 lot cluster subdivision for single-family residential development at 8517 and 8518 Moraya Road, as displayed, uh, on the following plans and supporting documents. One, proposed cluster subdivision, plan sheets dated March 16th, 2022, and revised through March 20, 2023. Sheets 1 through 15, prepared by SLR Consulting, Inc., and sheets 16 through 20, prepared by Nirianni Land Surveying LLC. Two, drainage report dated March 16th, 2022, and revised through February 1, 2023, prepared by SLR Consulting, Inc. Three, traffic memo dated February 9, 2023, and revised through March 17, 2023, prepared by SLR Consulting, Inc. Four, groundwater monitoring data from March 2021, March 8th, 2023, March 24th, 2023, and April 6th, 2023, prepared by SLR Consulting, Inc. Five, geotechnical data report, proposed development 85 and 8518, excuse me, 8517 and 8518 Moraya Road, East Side, Farmington, Connecticut, dated February 2023, and revised April 21st, 2023, prepared by Down to Earth Consulting LLC. And six, wetland letter report dated April 20, 2023, prepared by REMA Ecological Services LLC, and all other technical reports and documents submitted by the applicant in support of the application submitted throughout the hearing, collectively referred to herein after as application. And whereas the commission received the application on February 13th, 2023, and found the application to be complete. And whereas the commission conducted a properly noticed public hearing on the application in accordance with Connecticut general statutes and the Farmington zoning regulations on March 13th, 2023, March 27th, 2023, and April 24th, 2023. And whereas the commission received written and verbal public comment, which have been accepted into the record and are incorporated by reference herein. And whereas the commission closed the hearing on the application at the April 24th, 2023 meeting. And whereas the commission evaluated the proposal in accordance with its regulations and has received a report regarding the approval of the project by the Farmington Inland Wetlands Commission. And whereas the commission evaluated the proposal in accordance with the Town of Farmington Regulations for subdivision in Article 2, Section 19, and Article four, four, yeah, Section 12, that's good, of the Town of Farmington Regulations for zoning, and gave due consideration to the Farmington Plan of Conservation and Development as required in Connecticut General Statute 8-3B. And now, therefore be it resolved that the commission finds the proposed special permit and subdivision application for 25 lot cluster subdivision for single-family residential development at 8517 and 8518 Moraya Road, as displayed on the plans entitled Proposed Cluster Subdivision, plan sheets dated March 16th, 2022, and revised through March 20, 2023. Sheets 1 through 15, prepared by SLR Consulting, Inc., and sheet 16 through 20, prepared by Nirianni Land Surveying LLC. And all other technical reports and documents submitted by the applicant in support of that application submitted throughout the hearing, collectively referred to herein as an application on conformance with the requirements found in the Farmington zoning subdivision regulations and Connecticut general statutes. And therefore be it further resolved, the commission approves said application subject to the following conditions. All right, and let's look at the conditions. All right, the first condition. Um, let me know if you want to include it. It says, uh, the subdivision plan shall be filed on the land records within 90 days of the approval. Subdivision filing shall include the deeding of the open space to the Town of Farmington and shall include the conservation easements. Subdivision plans shall note requirement of homeowners association to implement an integrated pest management plan for all usable area of each lot of the development. Are we satisfied with this condition?
Okay.
Yes, of course.
So just, um, because I floated this last time about, maybe this sort of James was coming out, or maybe not, but the integrated pest management plan. So, I, I was wondering if that, if what I said last time should be a little more mandatory. I think now it says there should be periodic testing of soil and surface grunder at site, and the tech, results may be forwarded to the town for review. I was wondering if we should make that, you know, an annual versus periodic test, or whatever.
Right.
Period or timeframe the commission is open to, and then make these results necessary to forward to the town to make sure the town is reviewing. And I think, Shannon, we, you said that was okay last time. If that's still okay this time?
Yeah, no, and, um, and, yes, so the integrated pest management plan, it'd be the, um, the way this is worded says, and integrated, it'd be the approved integrated pest management plan.
Mm-hmm.
And absolutely, testing results can be submitted, uh, annually.
Okay.
So we're gonna end up, anything else to this?
My, I just have one clarifying question. Integrated pest management, does that include fertilizer lawn, um, cracks? Okay, so that's all encompassing.
Yes.
Okay, then yes.
Okay. So we're adding, testing results will be submitted annually?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay. James, you're satisfied with that, too?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, the second, um, condition. The proposal shall adhere to all engineering division comments and conditions in their latest memorandum dated March 8th, 2023, and all previous memorandums, all relevant sections of the zoning regulations, and all representations made by the applicant during public hearing. We're good?
Yes.
Final signed and stamped plans addressing all comments, conditions, and testimony provided during hearings shall be submitted to the Farmington Planning Division prior to scheduling a pre-construction meeting. Yep.
Yes.
Okay. The proposal shall remain compliant with permit number GSN 003895, the CTDBP permit for the discharge of stormwater and dewatering wastewater from construction activities issued March 6, 2023. That stays, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
A pre-construction meeting shall take place with town staff prior to initiating any construction activities. The applicant and contractor will be responsible for providing a construction sequence plan. We're good with this? You want to?
Can I, just a question on that. Shannon, is that construction plan sort of public document? Can the public access that when it becomes available? Just so people are aware of.
Technically, yes. I, so once, uh, it would be part of the building, basically, our building review documents, and, uh, yes. If somebody came in and wanted to understand what the construction sequence was, any of these. Uh, yes, if somebody came in and wanted to understand what the construction sequence was, any of these documents are public access.
Okay, thanks, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Construction sequence shall require detention basins to be constructed first. To confirm basin's bottom and storage capacity will not be impacted by groundwater. Groundwater impact to basins will require redesign of basins and possibly additional permitting for site plan modifications. This is a big one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
If it's different than what we're talking about, they need to come back, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, uh basements shall not have some pumps, all foundation drains shall gravity drain to the drainage system or to daylight. We're comfortable with that one, okay? The geotechnical engineer. And hydraulic hydrogeologist shall provide the final design for curtain drains or basement waterproofing. Prior to the issuance of the building permits for the affected lots. No changes, okay? Conservation easement markers shall be installed along the limits of open space and conservation easement. At all property corners and at fifty-foot intervals. The conservation easement markers shall be installed prior to the start of clearing for each adjacent lot. Okay. Homeowners Association documents shall be completed and filed on the land records prior to the issuance. Of any certificate of occupancy or as agreed to by town staff. All right. Are you comfortable with like your runoff, you feel like we have everything in here? Is there any, anything else you want to add, Matt?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
You're good.
Mm-hmm.
You're good. Sorry, yeah, I know, this is good.
Yeah.
Mike is good. Okay. Thank you, everyone, so now we vote.
Both uh Liz and James amend your motion to include the resolution and conditions that were just read in, and it can be. That's fine, it it doesn't need to be more complex than that.
That's fine.
Um, but it should be amended to match what was just read into the record, if you're, that's your agreement.
Okay, uh Liz Sanford, I'd like to amend my original motion to include what was read into the record. Both the resolution and the um conditions.
Second.
Okay. So we're ready for a vote, all right, Matt, yay or nay?
Yay.
Scott?
Yay.
Liz?
Yay.
Uh, James?
Yay.
Mike?
Yeah.
And I'm also a yay. So it's unanimous. Switching, Shannon, you all set?
Yeah, I'm just doing a couple of notes.
Sure, sure. We'll let you breathe over there. Since you're running the um online portion too.
Oh, I'm all set, I'll just leave it up, if uh anybody wants a document up, then I'm happy to pull up a document, for now, I'll just leave the aerial up.
Okay. All right, uh next old business item is an application from Town Farm Development LLC. It's an application for modification of conditions of approved special permit. For event use at one fifty-two Town Farm Road, R forty F W zones. This public hearing was closed on May eighth, twenty twenty-three. All right, and we're gonna do something similar um, and if we need uh Shannon to. Pull up any documents, let us know, James, Mike, you're good. I know, man, the next one, maybe I'll start the other way. All right, do you have any questions about this application? Um, you need additional information?
You know, can I just ask again, as last time, right, so to me, there's three options here, so. I mean Shannon, if we deny this application, right, it goes back to the existing special permit, which. Is maybe less clear than the town would like, is that a fair way to describe it?
Uh, cor- correct, um, the staff is prepared to move ahead with that if that's what's decided.
And we think whatever has been happening on site can still happen on site if we deny this application, or is that? Again, back with the staff and the applicant to manage through.
Correct.
Okay.
Staff and, staff and the applicant will manage through that and um. Take appropriate actions as needed.
Okay. Yeah, so for me, it's right, appro- approve as is, approve with a lot of condi- uh conditions. Of that we as commissioners figure out, whatever that is, or we just sort of deny and we. Leave it to the sort of professional staff to deal with the applicant sort of on the ground, that's, that's. The three buckets, I I I have no idea, again, what bucket I'm in yet, because this one is complex. Uh, but I have no other sort of questions at this point.
Why, I'm just, okay, good, okay, uh, I just see the top of your head, but that's okay.
Vertically challenged.
I know, I know, these seats, we need to raise them, me too, um. That's fair, Matt, thank you, um, it's definitely not an easy one, right, um, a lot of input. On this application, how about you, Scott, how do you feel about uh this application, do you need additional information, do you want Shannon to bring anything up?
No, I don't think so, I mean, Matt allude to it, it's a pretty complex situation, obviously. Um, you know, you've got the Polo Grounds, it has a, a history behind it of, and sort of a precedent for some event activity there. Um, but it's in a residential zone, so that rub for me is the one that I'm really trying to work through to. To understand which direction I'm leaning in as well, and I I think Matt put it well in saying what the options are, I think that's kind of where I am as well. I don't really have any questions at this point.
All right. Liz?
Uh, I don't have any outstanding questions, um. Except I'm just still pondering, still.
Okay.
Weighing, it is very complex.
James, questions on this application?
Uh, no, no uh additional questions, I think um. It it's, it's challenging to Scott's point, um, it being at R forty zone, um, the only, the only word keeps coming to mind is compromise and and balance. Um, between, you know, this, it, it could be any other neighbor, it happens to be the Polo Grounds, it's a little, it's a little bit challenging. Um, so, but I think that there needs to be a little bit of balance there, whether or not we go back to the, the way it's been. With the current agreement that's in place with a little bit of ambiguity, ambiguity. Where the applicant can kind of stretch those rules and regulations and. You know, I think, I think the fact that that we're, we're here, we're talking about modifications to that. Shows some of that compromise, but I think that we can do a little bit better based on pub- public testimony and and the comments that we heard from, from the neighbors. Um, you know, I I think that there's, there's some balance, I think we can strike some sort, sort of balance at this point. Um, but we need to discuss those.
Okay, and Mike?
Yeah, an extension of what James is talking about, I, to me. A lot of what was discussed really revolves around cars and coffee, uh, the fact it's on Sunday, um, I know the start time is eight thirty, but. Um, certainly, you know, having driven by there, there's early arrivals, um, and I I think that's a lot for Sunday, so to me. Um, if conditions were put on, it would certainly be around cars and coffee. Um, I know there was a little back and forth last time, if the applicant's willing to entertain conditions and and where that goes, so. Um, because the conditions I'd be interested in would be about cars and coffee, and I don't know if they'd be entertained, I'm leaning towards voting no and denying the application.
Okay. Okay, thank you, um. Shannon, I wanted to ask you, uh, I don't think I did that before, but um, we talked, uh, we heard through a number of people mentioned it. It may have been the same person mentioning it twice, but um, do we have an encroachment issue by the river, this was mentioned a few times on.
So town staff has been on the property, there was a reference to the aqueduct. And that the aqueduct comes out towards the. Uh, the roadway and as part of the driveway of actually the one sixty-two Town Farm driveway, I didn't see an encroachment.
Okay.
Um, and I have walked uh the river perimeter and there's some paddocks there uh. That we'll, we'll look at further with Mr. Seer, but at the moment, there is not.
Okay, great.
There is nothing that is concerning at the moment.
Yep, okay, thank you, and thank you for taking the time and visiting the property, um. There has been so much back and forth on it. You know, wh- what is one of, it, were there a number of things, right, but uh, you know, being in harmony, protecting the neighborhoods, the traffic. It just seems like one big enforcement issue. Um, I'm definitely uh leaning towards a no, I I, there's just way uh too much public. Comments of what's going on, I. I worry that if we say yes, it's um. You know, it, are we gonna um have adherence issues, or? It, I just feel like it's gonna be a huge deal for the town to monitor. But uh, that's where I'm at with this application too. So we have, are we comfortable with this uh voting today and which way are we going, right? So we have a, the, we have an application that's an existing application, right, that's in place, and now we're being asked for modification. It is, I heard Mike say, you're ready to vote, possibly denied the application, James, you are looking at possibly some conditions. Right, Liz?
That would be the only way I'd approve it, is if there are conditions.
I'm in a similar place, with, with pretty significant condition.
Okay, and then, Matt?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with, with Mike, especially on the cars and coffee and. What conditions we put or not, or what's acceptable or not, so. I think we probably need to, for me, deny, and then had, has to go back to the town staff to, uh, again, sort that out.
Okay.
And I mean, just to go back to your comment about enforcement, I think an approval or denial, there's a, a large burden of the town, what it could. Say that, you know, approved, um, certainly the owner has said they would take some of the cost onto themselves, um. But again, my gut right now, it's certainly unfair to the town and the, the cost that it's gonna be, but I'd prefer to see them have to enforce with a, a denial.
So we wanna go that way and discuss a denial motion, what, which way are we heading? We need a mo- go ahead.
Somebody, somebody can just make a motion.
Right.
Second, it doesn't really matter, if it's a.
All right.
The affirmative or the negative.
Go ahead, Liz, you handled the last motion very well, we need a motion on this application, please. And we'll take.
Should I, should I read the room and? Read the, read the commission or?
Make a motion and we'll decide. You can make it.
Typically, the motions are made in the affirmative.
Affirmative.
Okay, that's what I was, okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, um, okay, Liz Sanford, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for modification of conditions. By Town Farm Development LLC. For the approved special permit for event use at one fifty-two Town Farm Road. R forty F W zones.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Here we are, I'm, I, it's not, I'm, yeah. Here we are, so we have an affirmative motion, um. Which way do we want to go, Matt, I know, next one, I, I will start on the other end.
I mean, this seems, it just seems like a lot of events for this. Um, p- property, this re- this zone, right, the twenty-five. Non-equestrian plus the dequestrian plus the under two hundred.
Yep.
Really, this special permit, we could be approving events every day of the week, all year, right? If they're under a certain number of peoples, you get a hundred and ninety-nine cars with one person in it could show up every day for an event. Uh, to me, I, I just don't think. You know, I'm, I'm there with this, with this application for that.
Hey, Scott, are you in the same camp?
Yeah, when I started to think about it, I, I just jotted some notes about what I would, what conditions I would put on it. And I, I, they're pretty significant based on, on what we heard in the public hearings. The, the cars with coffee, as Mike mentioned, is certainly a concern, I agree with Matt on the number of events and. My only thought there was, do we get rid of this, like, greater than four hundred, less than four hundred, and just cap it so that it's not every weekend of the summer and the fall? And potentially more than that. Um, and I think the hours are pretty expensive, extensive and not neighbor friendly as well, we talk about things starting at. You know, eight or eight-thirty in the morning, but realistically, it sounds like they're starting earlier than that, so to me, the hours would need to be squeezed too. So all of that together, it's either that for me, or it's no.
Okay. Liz?
Uh, I am also a big sticking point with the uh, the co- cars and coffee, I find it. Um, rather early to be starting uh on a Sunday morning. And um, just personal experience, I live on a busy road, I know what it's like to get motorcycles coming up and down my road. Because they come down my road off the highway on Sunday nights, coming back from the beach, so. It's not fun, I, yes, I have gotten used to it, but. It's not every day of the week, and so there are valid, you know, very valid concerns. And it is, yes, it's a farm and it started as a very bucolic lovely farm. How many decades ago? But it has become a business. A successful business, that's great, more power to you, but. The biggest thing I've written on every note, compromise, compromise, compromise. And I'm not feeling it, I, I think we'd have to really work on the hours. Um, especially mornings, and yes, I know horses get up early, um. Not to make light, but uh, I just. The hours are a big part, and it does seem like there are lots of events, lots of different ways events can be. Inducted, so I am leaning towards a no.
Okay. James?
Um, yeah, I mean, going back to the, the previous application, we were talking about, you know, we were elected to be objective. Um, but we're also elected to be the voice of the, the people, right, and we heard a lot of voices um over the last several weeks, um, and. I, I, I think we have to listen to, to those voices, all of the neighbors, I mean, I, you count all of the properties, I think every single one of them spoke. Or whether, you know, on Zoom or otherwise. Um, so we have to listen to that, and we have to listen hard, um, and I think that there's, you know, we were talking about cars and coffee, and a lot of this. Wa- was around cars and coffee, obviously a number of events too, but. The cars and coffee event, whether it be we live at the hours there, we limit the number of events, um, those are the types of conditions that I would be looking for, and to Scott's point, hours of preparation would be something to. To consider as well and be a little bit of a better neighbor, um, and I think that that's. You know, it, it's hard because the Polo Grounds is such a huge piece of Farmington, um, and has become such a huge piece of Farmington, so it's nothing against. The Polo Grounds themselves and what they're doing and the causes that they support. Um, it's more about just trying to find that balance and that compromise.
All right, Mike?
Uh, to James's point, you know, I do want to go back to, to stating, I think the, the polo side of things and. Everything having to do with equestrians, great, um, so, you know, I, I understand there's some concerns about noise, I, I think, um, the owner's gone. In a good direction with what, what they're dealing with, uh, with regard to the speakers and, and noise monitoring systems, also touch on what Liz talked about, I very much respect the business that it's grown. Um, but then going back to James, um, to, to be honest, throughout everything that was discussed, I didn't hear the, the feeling of much compromise at all. Um, you know, and I, I don't think the best foot forward of. Understanding and, and trying to compromise with the neighbors was there, and so the only way I'd be voting yes, which again, I, I don't think would be accepted was. I see no reason cars and coffee couldn't be moved to Saturday morning, starting at ten. Um, as evidenced by the schedule of, you know, they do have that polo match on that Sunday when cars and coffee starts, and they have the polo match, so saying it has to jive with. Uh, juvenile polo, um, or junior polo and the F one race. Again, to me, is not a selling point, so to me, the only condition that would exist would be moving cars and coffee to Saturday, starting at ten. Um, I don't think that's on the table, so again, right now, I would vote to deny.
Okay, sounds like we're.
Mm-hmm.
All leaning the same way, so. We have a special permit that's in place, but the modification, none of us are comfortable with the way it's presented and what we heard worked, okay? So we have an affirmative um motion, right, in a second. We, one by one, or, yeah?
It's like you did last time.
Yep, okay. We're ready to vote, everyone knows what we're voting on?
Want to start down here this time?
Fine, fine. You're good with that, Matt?
Sure.
All right. Mike, yay or nay?
Nay.
James?
Nay.
Liz?
Nay.
Scott?
Nay.
Matt?
Nay.
And it's a nay for me also. So application for the modification conditions has been denied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mass exodus. Mass exodus.
Did you see this? Okay. We'll just give a minute for the room to clear up. That's right, we do. Okay, we can continue?
Yes.
Okay.
Different field in the room.
Alright, on to new business. The first item is an application from Calco Construction. It's for a property located at one sixty-eight Copper Mine Road. It's a request for final ninety-day extension of time to file subdivision mylar and associated documents. Alright, Shannon is applicant here, or do you have some information?
I, so the request is up on the screen from the applicant. Uh, these are fairly standard requests that we get for subdivision plans. Um, not so much the response to comments, but getting the other documents finalized. Takes a little time. I did note for the record that uh. We, staff is in receipt at this particular point of time of the draft easement documents and final plans for our final review, so.
Um, you think it may happen?
I think, yeah, I think we're, we're fine uh in granting this extension, and at least at this point, they've gotten us the requisite documents for our review.
Okay.
We might have, we might actually have a little time to look at it now.
Yep, okay, we need a, a motion and a second, please.
Uh, Liz Sanford, I make a motion to uh grant the request by Calco Construction. For one sixty-eight Copper Mine Road, uh, the request for a final ninety-day extension of time to file subdivision mylar. And associated documents.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're good, you know? We had the same people stay, right? Or unless we wanna change things up? I was just thinking about that.
Uh, it's up to you, if, if you want to, to do this.
I, could Matt go from here on out, just?
Yeah, is that okay?
So there's no continuation, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Matt?
I'm good.
Alright. Um. Okay, Sandy, you got that? Okay, thank you. Alright, the next is an application, application from Puente American Latino Pub. Property located at eighty-one South Main Street in Unionville. It's an application. Requesting approval for live entertainment under liquor permit slash restaurant use. Or accept application for special permit and schedule public hearing with a recommended hearing date of June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. We need a motion and second to accept this application?
Nope, nope, it's a new, sorry, new business, so we're going to. Uh, actually hear their request cuz it's an or.
Oh.
It's not, it's an or, so then you can, so you can decide.
If it's a, if it's a public hearing?
You need to decide, so, or you can approve it similar to what we did with um Iron Horse Pub. Back, uh, I think two meetings ago, sure, so.
Okay, you got it, thank you, sorry about that, welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening.
State your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Luis Vasquez, I'm the owner of Puente Pub and my wife Carrie.
Okay, hi.
Hi. So we are requesting a, a approval for live entertainment under our liquor permit. Uh, as far as the parameters of that, that, uh, we, we will not have amplified entertainment in the patio. Unless it would be an acoustic, acoustic guitar or anything like that. And uh, as far as outside entertainment, it would only be during brunch hours, so I don't see anything as far as uh. Unamplified entertainment in the patio past three or four o'clock on Saturday or Sunday. As far as uh inside the restaurant, there, we're requesting, you know, uh, under the, the liquor uh permit. Um, if we have a live band and anything amplified will be indoors. Uh, as far as the hours. Um, we'll be respecting, you know, our weekly hours, you know, there will be on the weekdays, no entertainment past nine o'clock and then. Friday and Saturday, no live entertainment past ten P M, you know?
For indoors.
Yeah, and then on the permit on the liquor commission, you know, makes you mark off a bunch of stuff, you know, like even. Uh, magicians are considered entertainment, you know, somebody wants to use the private. Event room that we have for a kid's birthday or something, you know, so, uh, so I mark all that off, you know, but. That's the extent of what we're, we wanna do, and the, the, the amount of entertainment, actually, you know, we don't perceive, uh, we don't see doing anything more than. Than two uh things maybe per quarter, so it's not gonna be like a, like a weekly thing either, you know?
Okay.
You guys have any questions?
Sure, I think, thank you, uh, we'll run through the commissioners, right? Thank you. Um, sure, James. Actually, Mike, you can ask question, yeah.
Uh, no questions.
Okay, James?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to confirm a couple of things. You said, what was the comment about four P M, the Saturday, Sunday?
Well, like, uh, we will brunch ends at three, right? So the only time I would have entertainment in the patio would be during lunch, uh, brunch hours.
Got it, alright, that's what I thought, yeah, great. Um, any change to seating capacity, anything like that? No, everything's changed, um, parking availability, all gonna be the same?
That, same, yeah.
Little bit, little bit of a tough spot regards to parking?
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, we, we have a overflow parking across the street on the other side of the liquor square. Of the liquor store and that's helped a lot.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Um, yeah, I mean, no other questions, I mean, it, it seems pretty straightforward. I mean, it doesn't sound like it's gonna be a ton of activity with.
No, not really.
Two events per quarter.
Yeah, we just wanted the option to have.
Yeah.
The, the entertainment.
It's gonna greatly impact, you know, I think, hopefully you get a good draw for it, right?
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
It's good, alright.
Thank you.
No questions.
How about you, Liz?
They have already, my questions were asked, thank you.
Alright, Scott?
No questions from me either.
And Matt?
No questions, I'm good, thank you.
I do not have any additional questions either. So we can vote as regular?
You can vote and approve the application as, as it was at your discretion as to whether or not you thought a public hearing was warranted.
Everyone comfortable with? No public hearing needed?
Yeah, no public hearing, yeah.
Okay, alright, so back to the motion and second and then a vote, please.
Okay, Liz Sanford, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request by Puente. American Latino Pub at eighty-one South Main Street, Unionville. For live entertainment under the liquor permit, restaurant use or um. Yeah, that's all I need to say.
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you are all set.
Thank you.
Touch with Shannon, thank you, or Shannon will be in touch with you, thank you. Alright, um, next item is um. A referral, uh, CGS eight dash twenty-four for a property at twenty-one Eli Road. It's a request. For release of a seventy-six square foot portion of Vista easement in exchange for a two hundred thirty-four square foot Vista easement. Who do we have? Or is it town staff?
Uh, well, it might be town staff, I see Brianna on, but I don't see a microphone associated with.
So this property has been with us before, right?
Correct.
Yep.
Hang on a second.
Sure.
Give me one sec. Oh, Bri- Brianna, I'm not seeing an, uh, uh, there we go. If you wanna unmute your microphone, Brianna, you can address the commission. And then I can assist with plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Shannon, I was having some audio issues, can you hear me okay now?
Yep, we sure can.
Hi there, um, so, um, do you want me just to go over what's in this letter, Shannon?
Uh, mostly. Please, why don't you do that, and then I've got the plan, and then I can assist in answering questions if there are any.
Okay, sure, um, hi, everybody, um, my name's Brianna Hill, um, we built a house on twenty-one Eli Road. Um, I'm, basically from this letter, what you can see is that um. We had to move our pool location just due to some ledge, um, and basically the pool ended up. Um, towards the back of the yard where the old um center of the house was meant to be. But that is essentially near the um conservation easement and some of it um. Uh, of that area kinda goes in and out like a curve, and so, long story short, the pool company we hired. Um, helped us put some markers into the ground, and once the pool was in, there was some trees that were leaning towards the pool. Um, and it just made us nervous, so we took some of those pools out, not realizing that some of the stakes that marked where the easement was. Um, were basically uh removed, and so therefore, we, we have been working with the town pretty diligently to try to make up for that. We just planted nine new trees, um, and we are giving up quite a bit of um additional easement. Um, and, you know, pay to find and things of that nature, but it came to our attention when we were doing that. That the location where the pool equipment was put um encroached on the um. Uh, in the conservation easement by that sixty or seventy-six square feet. Um, at that point, our, our, our pool company had told me that they do a ton in Farmington. It has come to my attention that they do not, and they didn't really warn me on the proper place on where it could go. They assured me that the location of the pool comment was okay, so to make up for this, um, we are giving up. Um, a lot of additional easement that we're happy to give up, um, and all we're asking for um in return is that we please don't have to relocate. The pool equipment, because at this point, um, there's a lot of underground piping, um, there's gas lines, there's um air. There's a sprinkler system, there's a lot going on there. There's also still some ledge, and so the machines and things like that, we'd have to bring in. To try to move that pool equipment and redo it is, would be a very, very expensive bill. We just, we started getting some quotes and it was um well over six figures that we just simply don't have at the time. So we're, we're asking for forgiveness and um this, this approval to try to leave our pool equipment where it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright. Matt, I'm gonna start with you, you have any questions? How do you feel about this request?
Yeah, so Shannon, if you don't mind, can you put the cursor where the pool equipment is from today?
The pool equipment's right, so I'll zoom in on the, the plan.
See the?
The pool equipment's here, just to the upper left of the pool. And red, it says conservation, uh, it, it's actually the Vista easement, there is.
Right.
There's a Vista easement and a conservation easement on the property. The conservation easement is to the far left edge, which is west, north happens to be up on this plan. So it's to the far western edge, this is an encroachment into a Vista easement, which predates what our ridge line protection. Uh, zone is, so that's, uh, there's a seventy-six square foot encroachment where the pool equipment is. And the homeowner is offering this additional two hundred and thirty-four. Square feet in exchange, so um roughly a three to one ratio. The homeowner was before us in December.
Yeah.
To talk about the planting and movement, so the, the planting's been done. The fence is in the process of being moved, uh, uh, Ms. Hilt, do you have a schedule for when the fence is being moved?
Yep, so, yep, so Bruce was out here early last week, I showed him the proposed area for the um new, the new fence. Cuz I had my engineer put some stakes in to show where the, the conservation easement is. And Bruce approved that, and so the fence guys are hopefully coming out, they're trying to squeeze me in um early June.
Okay. So, uh, so is the condition, so when we looked at this at the end of last year. We knew about the pool, but at the time, we thought the pool was gonna be able to, or the equipment, excuse me. The equipment encroachment, it was going to move out, since then, Ms. Hilt has gotten the quotes regarding the cost.
Yep.
So.
Um, so this, this, the dotted line essentially here, right, the concert, will just slide over, so. To the left essentially what I'm looking at, and the pool equipment will be, will be out of that and.
Correct, it'll come out around it, right?
So, I assume this is relatively standard in-ground pool equipment, right? Just like your standard filter and anything?
Yeah, yeah, I don't have anything crazy um back there, it's, um, I, the inspector, the town inspector was out here last week. And it wasn't anything, I don't have anything crazy fancy, it's just a standard like uh pad with the equipment on it.
Okay. Okay, no, no other questions?
I'm what you was got?
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Liz?
No questions, alright, Matt?
Nothing for me?
James?
No questions.
I do not have any new questions, um, you know, I do appreciate you taking corrective action. Um. Sounds like you paid the fine, we appreciate that.
Yeah, of course.
Yep, um, you know, things happen, like you mentioned already, dealing with the pool, our contractor, um, said. Knowledge of this in Farmington and doesn't, uh, I think this uh proposed swap is a, it's a fine. Uh, solution to what we're doing without needing to move the equipment. And I do not have any questions, um, are we good with a, a vote?
Yes.
Yes, we're good, okay, so we need a motion and a second, please.
Uh, okay, I would, Liz Sanford, like to make a motion, um. Before I, for positive referral.
Back, back to town council.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm saying it right.
Positive referral back to in support of the exchange.
Okay, um, Liz Sanford, I'd like to make a motion um in favor of a positive referral to the town council. For the report for the release of a seventy-six square foot portion of Vista easement in exchange for a. Two hundred and thirty-four square foot Vista easement at twenty-one, twenty-one Eli Road.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, you're good, we're comfortable.
And I'm.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night. You too. Alright, the last new business item in front of us is an application from John Dawson, ninety-four Perry Street. Is this a public hearing, or are we getting the applicant?
Uh, no, this is to schedule a public hearing.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, sorry for the.
Yeah, it's okay, it's okay, um, so we need a motion and a second to accept it, and please read the entire thing.
Okay, um, I'd like a motion, make a motion to accept the application for a special permit. From John Dawson at ninety-four Perry Street for special permit for expanded home in excess of. One thousand six hundred square feet of living area and two thousand two hundred square feet of total area in the R-nine zone. Special permit for accessory structure greater than five hundred and fifty square feet. And schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, opposed? Alright, application is accepted. Thank you. Moving right along, it's eight o'clock, you guys, this is good.
Alright, Madam Chair, if I can, I need to, I need to check our video screen. So I've been told, it's not picking up the podium, so since we're going to public hearing, I wanted to see if I can make an adjustment.
Makes sense.
Let's don't jinx that, and then.
I should not have said that.
Okay, I'll sit, thank you.
Okay, we have a couple commissioners just taking a break for a minute.
Oh, perfect.
Yep.
Good timing.
Mm-hmm.
This gives me a chance to upload or open up all the other documents.
Absolutely. All good. I love visuals. You know?
A lot of trees.
All right. Shannon, are we all set? Almost?
Uh, we are, recordings on, everything's, we're good.
All right. All right, folks, uh, now on to the public hearing, uh, portion of our meeting. Uh, this is where, um, applicant presents, uh, to the commission. We have a chance to ask questions. When we're done asking questions, we turn the meeting to you here in person and on the line. Um, if you have questions or wish to speak in favor or in opposition of the application. And, uh, we'll remind you, uh, when each portion is taking place. All right, so the first, uh, item is an item that is, uh, continued from last meeting. It's an application from Town of Farmington and EverSource for special permit for the removal of seventeen trees within the scenic road portion of Old Mountain Road. Old Mountain Road between Mountain Spring Road and Talkeet Notch Road, R eighty zone. And who do we have?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I should, I should know, yes.
Hello, hello, Jim Rusbasen, Town of Farmington, uh, Julian is EverSource representative. The last time we were here, there was a resident that had a concern, a little confusion about the tree markings. Think you guys have the packets?
We don't.
Julian went out last week, uh, took these colored pictures, remarked everything.
And, uh, total trees are actually nineteen, not seventeen, because we added on one more dead maple at the end that I agreed to take down. And one of the trees, it's actually two small trees right next to each other that, uh, I had just written on the same line. So that was my mistake, so it's actually nineteen, they were all marked with, uh, ribbon and found on the map and the tree list.
Okay, and, um, there was some coverage, or some residents wanted to be consulted. Was it, did you have a chance to visit any of the neighbors or?
Uh, I talked to them out here, actually.
Okay.
And they basically told me they had no issues with the trees coming down, they were just concerned. Uh, I think it was Mr. Robertson had an issue trying to find a tree. Other than that, you know, I told him, call, they should, anybody that's a resident should call the highway department if they have a question. Um, I offered to meet them up there and, and they seemed like they were pretty satisfied with that.
Okay.
And I didn't hear from anybody since.
The one other concern at the last meeting was for, I believe, two ninety-nine old mountain, and he said they didn't want it to remove, that was actually a private tree, not part of the scenic road at all. We've reached out to him, let him know, hey, you don't, that's fine, it's all yours, has nothing to do with the scenic road or the scenic road ordinance.
Okay, so, but why did the number, so the number should decrease now, if you're not taking that one?
That one wasn't on the.
Oh, okay.
So what had happened is he was contacted by somebody.
Got it, okay. So that's good, we got a result, right?
Yes.
All right, um, I'll turn it over to questions and then we'll see if there's anyone, uh, that wishes to, uh, speak regarding this application. Matt, do you have any, uh, new questions?
No, no questions.
All right, Scott?
Nope, no questions.
Liz?
No questions.
Matt?
Nothing.
James?
Nothing for me.
Yeah, nothing for me either. Thank you for marking them and, uh, making effort, you know, contacting residents, um. And let's see, let's turn this over to the public, um. If there's someone in this room that wishes to speak in favor or opposition of this application, come on up to the podium and please state your name and address. If there's someone in this room that wishes to speak in favor or opposition of this application, come on up to the podium and please state your name and address. All right, okay, come on up.
Hi, I'm Steven Gillette, I'm a resident of three-three-five Old Mountain Road. I don't have a preference in one way or the other, I'm, I'm very happy to see some of these trees going because they are going to go. Um, if somebody doesn't take care of them, my request would be that while this tree operation is going on, that the entirety of Old Mountain Road be closed between Mountain Spring and Talkeet Notch, except for residents. Old Mountain Road is unfortunately an incredibly busy and therefore dangerous road as it is to have large equipment that cannot be seen around those curbs or over those hills, um, is only going to exacerbate the problem. That would be my request is just to, to take an overwhelming safety precaution while you all are in there taking these out because the amount of times that residents nearly get run off that road in the best of conditions is unfortunate. So that would be my only request.
Thank you. We'll collect any other questions and then have you, uh, respond. All right, anyone else in the room that wishes to speak regarding this application? Okay, how about online, Shannon?
If anyone has called in to offer comment regarding the application for tree removal along Old Mountain Road between, uh, Mountain Spring and Talkeet Notch, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone's called in regarding the EverSource application for tree removal along Old Mountain Road, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised. We did have written correspondence that did come in.
We did?
Yes.
Okay, a lot of it, or is it?
Just one.
Just one, is it, can we get it?
Got it, we got it right here, so, um, Mr. Parker Sheaf's, uh, sent an email, uh, with concern, um, uh, sensible for the, uh, he would like to see tree replacement, um, is what he, his first comment, um, and then attention from the contractors with cleaning up after the tree removal and not leaving items piled. And so those were the, that's the, I believe, the substance of his, so those two comments.
All right. Thank you.
And that was posted to the website as well.
And just this correspondence, okay.
Correct, that's the only one.
You wanna come, yeah, come on up, thank you. Yes, please, thank you.
Uh, first of all, hundred percent, we can close the road at both ends. Just residents get through or emergency vehicles, if, if it has, has to happen, that, that's not a big problem for us to do that. Uh, the letter, I actually agree, uh, with the part about Asplin. I get phone calls every week, I am on those guys to pick up the stuff. They have a habit of running down the main roads and just cutting, cutting and leaving the logs. And I know, do that, I don't know, do they have a timeline that they're supposed to?
So typically, we like to pick up the logs within two to three weeks. It takes a, uh, it's a specialized equipment, the log loaders, and we have X amount of those that go around to pick up all of the trees that we are removing at any given time. And so sometimes it can take a little bit, so we can definitely make sure that on this project that we absolutely, uh, exacerbate that timeline to make sure they're picked up as soon as we can.
And it's something that town would monitor or can or?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I've got, uh, contact with the Asplin supervisor out there. And I, and I'll be honest, I'm not happy with it. I get calls from people on Eli Road, there's a guy up there trying to mow his front lawn and the, the logs. Yeah, it, it's, it is a, it is a problem. And I, I just can keep calling them and calling them till they get there. It's definitely an issue.
Yeah, and give me a call and I'll make sure that it gets picked up as soon as we can.
Dude, so the contractor knows about it, the company?
Yeah, so, uh, what it is, is we were overwhelmed by the amount of removals that we were doing in a given area at the beginning of the year prior to, before, uh, we started this. So it's definitely something that we're working on, and there was some confusion with log lists getting out. But now that I've got that, uh, under control, it shouldn't be an issue there.
Including some old things that are.
Yes, all of them that are there will be picked up, I guarantee you.
For this project and whatever else the town has for you?
Any of that, yeah, without a doubt. And I encourage Jim, anytime that he gets any complaint for it, straight over to me, I'll get on the horn.
Okay, I, yeah, I, it's obviously a contractor you, you hire, right? But, uh, yeah, it sounds like there's some opportunity, right?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Shoots, make some changes. What is, uh, the second piece was the replacement?
Yeah, uh, personally, I don't think the tree should be replaced, especially in the area that they are, the right-of-way of the town road. It's not a great place to be replanting. And Julian, from an arborist point of view, licensed arborist, he could tell you what his thoughts are on that.
Yeah, given, given the location, it's not someplace that I would like to replant anyway.
Yep.
Uh, EverSource, we usually, you know, I don't wanna replant for, removing hazardous trees to begin with cause we're already doing that. Uh, and also almost the entire length that we're gonna be removing, tree already has canopy over it, which would make any more difficult for growing, cause they tend to grow towards the sun, which would mean out towards the road. And then, uh, again, dealing with sightline, I, I try to make sure not to plant anytime close to the road, especially around curves. So, uh, this doesn't appear to be a good candidate for that right now.
Okay, okay, so you know which property, uh, Mr. Parker resides at, or, yeah, that's, okay. I, I know I need to come back to everybody, but, uh, how long is this project? Like, can you cut, do all of this in one day or no?
No, this would be probably, looking at these trees, I don't wanna give a hard timeline. Uh, but it would be definitely multiple days, probably week and a half, two weeks. Depending on, uh, you know, there's several factors that can speed up or slow that down. But I'd wanna make sure that we get this done as fast as we can and get everything picked up as absolutely best.
If we close the road, can we get multiple?
Absolutely, that's what I want, but I never wanna speak for the contractor, of course, but that would be my goal, is to get it done as fast as possible.
Careful what you ask for, right? It could be, I mean, all right.
No, I, I mean, I, I could talk to them on that road.
Yeah.
You'll enjoy the blocking of the road, right, for a week or two?
I mean, I could talk to Asplin and tell them, that's what we want. If we're gonna, if we're gonna shut the road down, we need more than one truck in there.
Oh, they would, they would absolutely do that, for sure, you know?
I definitely think that limiting the number of days.
Sure.
And, uh, thank you for working with, um, residents and understanding, uh, why we need to take this, uh, safety measures. Um, all right, I totally messed up the questions, so Matt, do you have?
No, just quick, so resident notification when this work would have began is, how would people know about it? Town website or letters?
Not only will I let, uh, Jim know, and we would, uh, you can put it on the website beforehand, but also all of the abutters to the trees that we're going to remove will be notified by the contractor right then, and then we, we make sure to let them know before we do any of the tree removal. So they will be known as far as the exact abutters for where the trees are, and then we will make the schedule known and available for the town website.
Great, thank you, I'm good.
All right, Scott?
And they'll have information on who to contact if any issues come up?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect. Well, for me.
Yeah, me too, uh, Liz.
They've already been asked, all right, Matt?
Uh, all set.
All right, James?
All good.
All right. So while she can ask a question, you're.
No questions.
Okay. All right, um, is there anyone else that possibly raised their hand before I close it? Public hearing?
Uh, no, there are no hands raised.
Okay, anyone in the audience that wishes or in the room to speak in regarding this application, we're good. Right, we have no questions, so, and commissioners are all set, so at this point, I'm gonna, uh, close the public hearing and we need a motion and a second.
Okay, Liz Sanford, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application by the Town of Farmington and EverSource for a special permit for the removal of nineteen trees within the scenic road portion of Old Mountain Road, Old Mountain Road between Mountain Spring Road and Talkeet Notch Road, which is an R eighty zone.
One second?
Second.
All right, um, discussion, do we wanna add the conditions we mentioned? Escalation, communication, everything, we're good?
I'd say as presented.
As presented, it's fine, okay. Does, uh, Liz need to modify, as presented or we're good?
That's.
We're good?
I know where to find them.
Okay, oh, good. I didn't tell you, then you was, just kidding. All right, so I, I guess everyone know what we're voting on? Yes, okay, all in favor? Opposed? All right, you're all set, thank you. And the boss will be in touch. All right, uh, next application, um, is from Carrier Holding, Inc. It's an application for six lot re-subdivision of Dominique's Court with waivers and two lot subdivision with waivers of one-one-four Red Oak Hill Road, R thirty zone. Hi there.
Hello, for the record, uh, Brian Pannico with Hurry Colson here on behalf of the applicant.
Nice to see you.
I know, it's been quite a while, huh? Um, so up on the screen, and you may remember this project, um, was originally a four lot subdivision. Uh, since the approval of that four lot subdivision, uh, the applicant had spoken with the neighbor directly to the south of him, that neighbor was interested in, uh, potentially telling him some land in order to do another subdivision. Um, initially, so a little bit of background, this was actually designed, so the four lot subdivision to the north, and then we actually designed almost a mirror image of that to the south. Um, since that time, we actually got wetland approval. Uh, this went back to the Connecticut Water, Connecticut Water did not like the fact that we had, uh, water mains, there are no water mains in, uh, Red Oak Hill Road, they didn't like the fact that the water main connected through the two developments, uh, through private property underground. So went back and forth, um, with Connecticut Water, went back and forth with staff, uh, looked at the option of, uh, doing this as, uh, wells, um, and asked, requesting a waiver for all the house that was to be on wells. That wasn't, uh, very, yeah, well-taken, uh, design strategy. Um, and so then, as we started working through all the different design options, uh, what we came up with was, uh, the best possible kind of design scenario that we, we could, which was to essentially extend the four lot subdivision, an additional two lots. Um, the lots are already kinda narrow between, uh, the road and the trail. We didn't want to overburden any more of the trail. Um, and so what we are asking essentially for, uh, from a waiver request on this project is to reduce the right-of-way with, uh, to thirty feet instead of the fifty feet. Um, and what we've done in return is basically extended the pavement to be twenty-four foot of pavement still, uh, when only twenty-two is typically required. So this is still a private road. Uh, now we have essentially, uh, six lots on the Dominique's Court side instead of the original four. Um, the existing house remains on the Red Oak Hill side, and then there is one additional house being proposed, uh, as part of a subdivision on the southern portion of the site. Uh, that still technically would be yet another private road, um, because it is the two individual lots due to, um, I think it's about, Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong, like five or six feet short, ten feet short, from a frontage perspective, uh, between the two. So technically, one of those would have to be over your lot, rear lots are not desirable, they're not looked at uh, in that same way, so what we did was we had to create a private road to serve the existing house and that other second proposed lot. So even though it's a private road, it's still about an eighteen foot, uh, pavement, so it'll look like a large driveway coming off the Red Oak Hill side. This allows us to do, is allows the water mains, uh, to stay within the Red Oak Hill uh, or stay within the Dominique's Court roadway, which Connecticut Water is in favor of. And we essentially have one, we've proposed one, um, extension, uh, through, uh, we had proposed one extension through as the current house is currently serviced by a well. Um, but there are provisions in there, um, easements and whatnot designed there so that that house would be able to connect to the sewer system that we're proposing to bring through for the whole development. Um, and then if, depending on how talks with Connecticut Water go, if Connecticut Water would like to see that house connected to water as well, the easement there is large enough to do that. From a stormwater management perspective, uh, very similar to the previously approved project, the basin is in the exact same location. We've made some modification to it, made it a little bit larger to accept some of the larger roadway. Uh, we've also, um, redesigned from a grading perspective, the site overall, so that more, we're kind of more balanced, more dividing that site in more balanced manner, and we have a second detention basin designed in the, uh, southeast corner of the site as well. Um, so both of those basins do eventually connect, uh, to the New Burton Avenue system. Um, the one to the north will go, uh, basically directly to the north and connect to Coppermine Road, which goes down to the system, the one on the southern, uh, half of the site actually would, uh, discharge to a small, uh, wetland that's off-site, uh, which then flows to a culvert that goes under the trail and then into New Britain Avenue from there. Um, so everything's designed, um, to meet, to meet Ziro, um, Hundred Year Storm Event uh, considerations, and, um, right now, uh, the only kind of modifications and changes, again, from the previously proposed, and I, I think we have, uh, what the original proposal was, um, actually in color as well, if you'd like to see that. The major change again, we basically took the land area that would have been two lots on the other side of the road, put it back, uh, to the Dominique's Court side, which is the already approved side, um, and made that a six lot subdivision.
We're good? We're good?
So if there's any kind of initial questions or things we can go over.
Thank you, Brian, we'll turn it over to the commissioners, uh Matt?
I- is there a conservation easement? If so, how wide or large is that?
So what we did was we essentially kept the conservation easement the same way it was on the. First couple lots as it comes down the east and west side um of the property. Um and we basically extended it around to create kind of like a buffer between the Dominique's Court. With the new two additional lots and the two lots that'll be on Red Oak Hill and came around with it, so it was a total of uh point six four acres. Um and the uh parcel area, the total area of the parcel is uh six point. Four acres, so we're at the little over the ten, we're at the ten percent threshold on that.
And how many feet is that from from property lines?
Um from the property line in, I believe it was fifteen.
Maybe you can say what's the most narrowest conservation easement on the property?
Uh it does taper down to effectively nothing at the trail. Um and then we have on the top of the detention basin, there is, we proposed to plant a row of trees, so. It varies throughout the project. Um the bulk of it is like is essentially within like the side and rear yards of almost all of those uh proposed product properties.
Okay. My second question, just a larger, so if the two waivers do not get approved. How does the subdivision change?
So if the two waivers were to not get approved, we would essentially go back and we would have to create a fifty foot right of way. Um in which case, or we would have to look at um some sort of a another design strategy to do this. Um essentially doing it as a fifty foot right of way, we would basically have to just extend the cul-de-sac a little bit further. Uh reduce the lot areas to the absolute minimum. Um and essentially your front yard setback just pushes back further and the houses just get tighter between the basically the road and the trail. Um rear yard setback wouldn't change, so that instead of there being a little more rear yard, all the houses would just have to get pushed out.
It's the same number of lots, still six?
Um without doing.
Got it, okay. Okay.
It's hard to say, but.
Yeah, okay, understood.
Um and again, it's essentially the six up there. That in two down below, there is, you know, the minimum lot area is thirty thousand square feet, all of them are obviously larger than that, it's an R thirty zone. Um but we are above the minimum on on a few of those as well, I think Shannon pulled up the lot data table there as well.
Understood, and you're looking for us to wave sidewalks, is that fair, is that right?
Uh sidewalks as well, yep, there are no sidewalks on um. On uh Copper Mine Road or Red Oak Hill, um neither of those areas, um and as it is just a small little kind of small private road. Um it and it does directly above the trail, you could literally walk right from the road itself to.
Right, and this is private, so there would be an HOA?
Private HOA, HOA owned, yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Scott, thanks for that.
Alright, Scott, questions?
I actually don't have anything at the moment.
Okay, Liz?
Um let's see, I was just, I'm looking at numbers and and widths of roadway and um. One of the the waivers needed would be the um table two waiver requested for the pavement width for reduction from eighteen to. Ten foot for the two lot subdivision. And so I guess my question is, how wide is it like a normal driveway? Because from eighteen to ten, that seems.
Yeah, and I think actually on the the latest set of plans, we did show. The eighteen foot of driveway all the way from uh the road all the way through the entire, which is a hundred and fifty feet. Long is the requirement for that private roadway length, and we did show that, and and if you look at the. A drawing, um and I think Shannon pulled up a a good view there. Where the existing driveway, where we're where we're essentially proposing that. Private drive and then where it branches off for the existing driveway to the house that's there now. Effectively means that you have about a hundred feet of eighteen foot wide driveway serving just. One house. Um so what we had initially shown was it at eighteen feet wide. Just until the two of them branched off and then it reducing down to ten, just to kind of reduce some pavement um. Uh effectively, it doesn't affect the drainage calculations or anything else if we keep it at the full eighteen feet. Just our initial plan, we had it doing that because we felt as though serving, you know, one driveway for an extra hundred feet at eighteen. Feet wide instead of a ten foot driveway was unnecessary.
Uh okay. Thank you, yeah, Matt?
Uh in the agenda review, it's mentioned that there's engineering comments.
Uh correct, we did receive um engineering comments and we will. Go through and and address all of those comments.
So you're referencing the five nineteen memo?
Correct.
Okay, so when are we're gonna get those?
Uh we're gonna work this week on addressing all that, getting it back out to Bruce and Shannon.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, and James?
All set.
Do you think you'll be blasting? Oh, actually, I should ask questions, sorry, Mike, I know you're not voting on it, you're good?
No questions.
Alright, thank you, sorry. The, well, you need to blast for these new additions.
For the additional houses?
Yeah.
Yes, uh most likely, I know that the blasting permit for is in effect for um the other. For lots on Dominique's Court, so it would likely be a very similar uh scenario. Um what we did do prior to um. Making any final decisions as far as where that blasting was and how this plan would affect the other one. Was overlay the two of them and make sure that any of the blasting that they're gonna start doing very shortly for that initial four lot subdivision for Dominique's Court. Doesn't change, doesn't have to change, provided this move this moves forward. So that in the event that this is approved, the blasting would still, that may already be done in the meantime. Still already is is effective and can just continue and would have to just potentially get extended a little bit. Um or if it gets denied, it would still, the blasting is still in the correct place, so. Either way, the it's almost interchangeable from that respect, we didn't shift the road very far. Effectively, what we what we did was we increased the size of the right of way just to the thirty feet initially. Um under the previous application because of the number of lots. Sure only, though I think the requirement was a twenty foot, was it twenty feet and and it could be the same size as the.
I think twenty-two is still the minimum.
Twenty-two and and then the right of way is the same size as the as the driveway, so in this case we. Go to the thirty feet and what we did was we just extended that pavement by two feet, so all utilities, all the blasting, everything else. Remains the same effectively.
Is it going okay? I know you started, I walked the trail.
Um I believe it's going, it's going fine.
As planned? Okay, I know there were concerns, some residents, I think, had some a next door neighbor had two wells and things.
Uh yeah, I recall.
Alright. So public water, public sewer. The existing home on Red Oak will have the option of connecting, you're not connecting it as part of this application.
So unfortunately, what we've now figured out is that we're we're kind of at the mercy of Connecticut Water. So if they allow, they if they allow us to put laterals. In, so laterals almost always run under private property, right, comes from the right of way, goes to your house. Um if they allow us to put an easement in and run the laterals through uh to these other houses. Then we can absolutely connect, no problem, if they tell us, no, we don't want you to run laterals uh that far, which is. Kind of what they did with the main, you can't run the main um under essentially anything that's not pavement. Um then you just can't do pretty much any of what you want to do, and so. I I know that the developer is. Totally fine with connecting for both, um I know there's already a plan to connect for.
Yep.
Um sewer and everything, so.
Okay, yeah, I just um. It it would be ideal, right, that because what if you have to blast for the second one or just. You're already going into this habitat, cutting trees, uh blasting, which I know that uh residents were concerned about. Uh but doing it once, right, would be great, but I understand what you mentioned, um.
Yeah, the only kind of um, I guess. Maybe comforting. Would be that um as we work our way through, it's actually lower, so there is a a a fill condition. Uh for those newer houses where the mains would be, and so the likelihood of having to do any like. Deep blasting like the four or five or six feet that we're looking at for water and sewer main on the other side would be be reduced. Um but the idea would be that before we get to that stage, we would have some sort of answers from Connecticut Water before then.
Okay, thank you. Alright, um this is a public, anyone right now? No, we're good, okay, so this is a public hearing, um. If there's anyone inside this room that wishes to speak or ask questions about this application coming up. Sure, sure, state your name and your address, please, thank you.
Hazel Kazika, eleven Copper Mine Road. Uh already involved with the Dominique Court situation, blasting is going fine, people are very cooperative. The fire marshal's been out, the company that does the blasting has been very cooperative. Hitting all of us around the area, you know, after, pre and post. So it's good, they're they're putting the monitors on, the Richter scale, I call it, next to the the foundations that are close, and they intend to con- continue doing that. Um questions about the new, about the new proposal, and I guess I don't know what I can ask you. Um is the layout basically the same? Except pushing two new homes further into the other property on Red Oak?
Yes, we'll we'll do answers at the end.
Oh, okay, I just wondered, I didn't know what the, I mean, looking at the map is one thing, but knowing, because we already know, we already know what the proposal is. For the four homes, that's why I want to know where the sixth and the fifth home are gonna go.
Yep.
That's my my question. So the old home too, I'm I'm at the corner and I have a neighbor that's at school right now, so. Um I'm asking for her uh on Red Oak of the abutting property, is the old home gonna be existing then? I mean, this individual is gonna keep this home? Yes. The home, the existing home?
One.
Oh, okay, I mean, that that's all I want, no, no, new home is gonna be built, that's what I'm saying. Because originally it was supposedly, I understand the whole thing was gonna be taken and built like a mirror image, that's why I'm asking.
Um Shannon, at some.
At at this particular point in time, what they're proposing, it's it's showing is is lot eight, so it's um. As you come in off of Red Ho- Red Oak, it's on the left-hand side, uh one fourteen Red Oak.
Okay.
It's the current number, and at this particular point in time, that house is remaining. And my understanding is the individual that owns it is going to continue to own and not.
The reason why I ask is. I'm sorry.
I mean, that could sell at any point, right, so at at some point. They could sell and at some point in the future, someone could decide they want to demolish the house and rebuild.
Oh, I understand that.
Something different.
I know, I'm just.
Right now, the application is to leave the house as is.
Because I understood that originally it was supposed to be a mirror image, like they said, a mirror image, so that's why I wondered, but. Um the property is quite far from the road now, so that's I'm I'm wondering how the manipulation is gonna be. It's still gonna, it's still still gonna be R thirty, obviously, and there is. Uh the drainage, I'm sure will be a problem because of all the ledge, a lot of blasting, it's deep. They already have an existing, they already blasted for one foundation already, and uh the excavator, you can't even see it. It's that that far deep, so that's the problem for drainage, because it's also wetlands, wet. Uh when and when there's any heavy rain at all, it's also wet further on down. Where they're gonna be put, probably put in the fifth and sixth home, that's the concern, that used to be a brownstone quarry there at one time, so.
Okay.
That's why there's so much blasting. But that's my concern.
Okay, thanks, thank you for coming in front of us, we'll have the applicant answer all the questions.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, great. Anyone else that's in the room that wishes to speak regarding this application? We're good, okay, how about online, Shannon?
Uh if anyone has called in uh wishing to offer comment on the Carrier Holdings application. For Dominique's Court uh in one fourteen Red Oak Hill Road, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Hey, one more time, if anyone's called in regarding the Carrier Holdings application for Dominique's Court in one fourteen Red Oak Hill Road, please raise your hand. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Um so, yeah, to answer uh those couple of questions, the existing home uh that's currently labeled as lot eight. Um Shannon has up on the screen there, that is proposed to remain um the same. Uh as is, um the only change would be, we're essentially eliminating the driveway off of Red Oak Hill. And we're proposing a new driveway which would be shared. Um as far as the remaining kind of layout, the four unit layout is the same, so the road comes in, does that little bend, straightens out as it comes down. Um and effectively, all that we've done is make that road a little bit longer and just re-shifted the lot lines around so that. Instead of having the four uh lots with four houses, now there's six. Um from a drainage perspective, um we did have uh at the time that we went to wetlands. Um there are no wetlands on the site. Um it was brought to our attention by staff that there was some question of wetlands offsite. Uh we had a soil scientist go out, walk the property, um he didn't walk the property, did locate the wetlands that are offsite, that's actually um. Kind of straddles Town of Farmington and State of Connecticut property where the trail is. Um did walk the site, did us kind of assess the fact that. There are probably some uh situations during, especially during the wet season, when you have really heavy rains because of the shallow ledge. Um that the water probably does sit there, we did talk about it with staff as far as the kind of effectiveness of some of the. Initial design strategies that we had proposed on the first plan. Um then we, you know, going back to the fact that now we know we need to do blasting, you know, what's the effectiveness of. Some of the infiltration uh trenches and stuff that we had had proposed, so we have made modifications since that initial plan. To kind of to eliminate some of those infiltration portions of the detention basin and effectively, we do have a trench that will. Uh that dewaters the low uh low level flows slowly and tries to promote some infiltration, although. Um given the shallow ledge, there's not a not a whole lot you're gonna accomplish with it, none of our detention designs ever account. Or in in either one of these detention basin cases, account for infiltration, we always assume that none of the water. That we're collecting in these basins is soaking into the ground, that's just a conservative uh design strategy. Um and so at this time, the way it's designed, uh all of these things, we feel very confident with our design of footing drains, design of these basins. Um that once this is fully constructed, there won't be any issues with with that water.
Thank you. Uh Shannon, have we looked at the engineering comments, how and?
Uh the engineering comments were were shared with the the applicant on Friday, they've been. I believe they were shared with the commission on Friday and posted to the uh the website, there were some of the. The last minute items that uh were shared with everyone on Friday. Um at this time, there's uh sufficient questions regarding some of the drainage and CT water connection that staffs. Uh would like uh the commission to hold on an approval of this party or decision.
That works.
At this uh point in time.
Is that yours?
No.
Okay.
Thank God, no, mine's already, I'm like the dots going, it's already recording.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
And we have absolutely no uh objection to uh continuing this so that we can meet those.
Appreciate that, okay, perfect, any questions, okay, so uh we need a motion in a second to continue. And is this uh June, end of June, or which which date?
Uh we can continue to June twelfth for now.
June twelfth, okay. Alright, thank you. And we need a motion in a second to continue this. Public hearing.
Okay, um Liz Sanford, I'd like to make a motion to. Continue the public hearing of uh Carrier Holdings application for six lot re-subdivision of Dominique's Court. With waivers and two lot subdivision with waivers of one fourteen Red Oak Hill Road, R thirty zone. We'd like to continue that till June twelve, twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? Alright, we'll see you again in June.
Thank you.
It was nice meeting you. Alright. Let's see here. You say, oh, okay. It's switching.
You said, you said it was good to meet him.
Yeah, 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 alright, stay, that's okay, alright, the next application is. Um from Calco Construction, it's an application for six lots. um, from Calco Construction. It's an application for six lot subdivision of two-two-two Talkeet Notch Road with waivers, R eighty zone. And who do we have?
All right, for the record again, Brian Panico with Harry Colson, eight seven six South Main Street in Plansville. Uh, here on behalf of Calco Construction. Um, so this is a R eighty uh, residential zone. Uh, the parcel is sixteen point one eight acres, uh, currently uh, is one lot, one parcel with a single-family home on it. Um, most of the property is is wooded. Um, there are wetlands. Um, there's a pond uh, on the property as well. Uh, surrounded by residential properties uh, to the southeast and the northwest is Talkeet Notch uh, road. Um, and topographically, the entire site essentially slopes from east to west, so from uh, High Point uh, which you'll see is at the end of our cul-de-sac down all the way to Talkeet Notch. Um, so we are proposing the uh, regular R eighty subdivision. Um, all, so all the lots will have eighty thousand square foot minimum. Um, cul-de-sac provides uh, access uh, for for the, there are only six lots. Um, and we have the existing house, which will remain. Um, essentially, we've cut out uh, the house. Uh, it has a pool, um, some outbuildings. Uh, kind of cut that out of a lot um, to remain uh, a hundred percent intact and as is. Um, and then provided lots surrounding that. Um, two detention basins on site handle the stormwater. For the entire property, this is also gonna be, again, a private road. Um, this one does have a fifty-foot right-of-way as it is in R eighty zone. Plenty of space. There's a lot of room on all of these lots. And uh, at this point in time, we did receive additional comments. We have been going back and forth with town staff quite a bit on on some of the issues even from uh, wetlands approval. Back a while ago, um, and so we are kind of in the process of making some modifications. So again, on this, we would also uh, like to request the continuance on this, uh, just so we can continue to work with staff on some of the, some of those comments.
Okay, um, do we want to ask questions? Or do we want to wait? Does anyone have any questions? Matt, do you have any questions on this or?
We can, we can wait until we see.
Might as well wait, yeah.
Yeah, we can wait.
I know it's a late night, so.
No, well, I'm sure well, some after.
Don't jinx us, Brian.
There could be people online, right? Or, yeah. Is there anyone in the room that um, wishes uh, to ask questions about this application? Has any questions? You come on. Okay, sorry. Thank you, Brian. Come on up, yeah.
Hi, I'm Stephen Gillette, again, a resident of three thirty-five Old Mountain Road. Um, we reviewed the comments from the town engineer that were posted on Thursday. Um, we're happy to keep our comments until the continuance brings this application back before the committee because of no sense in in going over things that may be resolved.
True, true. Okay, but thank you. All right. Come on up.
Brian Cote, I'm at two forty Talkeet Notch Road, so to the north.
Yep.
I believe. Uh, my own, my biggest concern is just the space and whether they're, what they're gonna clear, because right now I have privacy and now I'm gonna have somebody staring into my backyard, which, I mean, I could be a bad neighbor, you know. I am a bad neighbor. I'll tell you that right now, but uh, you know, hopefully they plant some trees or do something, you know, I don't know whatever, when they get to that. I don't, I mean, I look at the plants, it looks like it looks like they're leaving trees, but I have no idea what that means, you know. Um, I planted trees up along that whole side, so maybe you guys could keep planting trees up along that whole backside. So, I don't know. And then, I mean, the biggest thing is the water. I mean, if you've ever been there during a rainstorm, I mean, the water that comes off that mountain, I don't know what you're gonna do with it. Because it's pretty, you know, serious.
Sir, I'm sorry, can you make sure you're into the microphone?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it, there's, there, water issue is a big issue. I don't know if any of you guys know about it, but on that whole road, I don't think there needs to be more traffic on the road. I don't think there needs to be, the, if there is a road there and it's diverted water from that road onto Talkeet Notch, it's a big road. I've seen that road flood multiple times with like feet of water. And I've only been there for four years. So I don't know what clearing all those trees is gonna do to the downflow of water, because that's my understanding that they cleared a lot, uh, you know, up the road. Wherever it is, it's been for sale forever because they can't develop it, because hurt tests and whatever, I don't know. But it created a big problem with water coming off of there that flooded other people's houses that were down below there, so that's my concern.
Thank you. Okay, noted. Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Good, okay. How about online, Shannon? Oh, I apologize. Come on up. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Jack Stanland. I live on uh, Topper Beach Lane. And my property backs up to Talkeet Notch Road. Um, I I agree with this other gentleman. Uh, I jog on that road a lot and uh, and the water problem is a big issue, and particularly in the winter when it comes in. Comes down on Talkeet Notch, freezes on the side and extends quite a way out uh, into the road. Um, it's also pretty much uphill. And where he's talking about the road coming down is a little tricky in terms of traffic. Um, you have a lot of traffic on Talkeet Notch. And opening up a new road onto it is going to create a a tricky problem uh, getting into the road and coming out. And uh, whatever their designs are, I hope they'll take that into account. Um, it's not the easiest place to uh, enter into Talkeet Notch and to leave, so I hope as we go along, we get more detail, we'll, we'll be able to find out more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in today. Oh, come on up. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm leaving my notes because it's my understanding that we'll have the opportunity to have. Okay, my name is Alexandra Buena Ventura Gillette. Um, I'm also at three thirty-five Old Mountain Road. If we are talking about the water, which is a substantial concern, we are low, the corner, a sort of cutout, if you will, there. Um, we have substantial water issues. We are a rear lot uh, that was purchased because it is lovely and private. Um, but we have substantial water issues in our basement, on our property. Um, as I understand it, this entire, our property included section of um, Old Mountain Road going down to Talkeet is deemed sea-level soil, which is to say that it is wet all the time. Um, it has been a problem for us on both sides of our property. Excuse me, such that there's a pond that's not noted on here. I don't know whether it will have an impact, but it's not included in the wetlands and there is a running stream year-round. Um, so I'd want to make sure that the commission is aware that I believe it's lot number three. Um, it's the opposite side of our property has a running stream and my hope would be that if they're coming out to do a site visit, they'll take a look at that as well. Um, as part of the ongoing concerns. My bigger concern is regarding lot four and its proximity. You'll see that it exists within the upland review um, area as I understand it and abuts um, our property line. Without the forty-foot space, um, as I understand is required, the conservation easement. I'm not exactly sure of the terms, but um, I will save those comments for a future question and just want to make sure that that you're aware of the ongoing water issues in this location.
Okay.
I don't object at all to the subdivision as a concept, um, but rather the fact that as it stands, I don't think that we're going to um, improve the ongoing existing water problems. So, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the room? Come on up. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pete Coin. I live uh, to Northington Way. First off, thank you for your service. I know you guys are all volunteers and appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Um, I I guess not to be redundant, but I I I just want to hit the the one, there were a couple things said. One was the uh, traffic. I agree with that. We're just south of of it, next to uh, Jack. We have, our our property share a property line. But the other thing I would say on the water, if you have never driven down the road, the um, there's a stream that actually feeds the aqueduct. And when it's uh, a light drizzle, you will see it flowing. And I think one of our other neighbors is online and our uh, properties, that's right next to our road and it, and with any changes, the topography will create a lot of uh, a lot of water, so. Um, but I'll reserve anything else for whenever it comes back up, but thank you.
Thank you. I was going to ask you, Shannon. Thank you for pulling up the map. But yeah, come on.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Just, it's okay.
So just the water issue having been, you know, sort of commented on, I think one of the things that is missed on the site plan. There was a lot of time spent on the two streams that converge into the pond on existing lot five. Those streams run through lot, proposed lot four. They come together at the bottom of proposed lot four into a pond on lot five and then continue down across lot six and will dump into a retaining pond that abuts Talkeet Notch Road. What is not accounted for at all if you go to lot three, which is the top of the screen. And is right there. So effectively, the property lines for three, two, and one. In the last year, we've spent a substantial amount of time and an even greater amount of money managing that water as it comes across our property, because there is an existing retention pond in the property above us that does its best. Let's put it there. Um, that water flows continuously across our property. We've been put in drainage to manage getting it under our driveway as opposed to across our driveway, which it used to do. Um, and that coupled with the multiple stream or sorry, springs that come up on the property just north of us. Coupled with the fact that our curtain drain also drains year-round down that causeway makes uh, yeah, that's that's helpful.
Yeah, which?
So right.
Which property are you?
We're three-three-five.
Okay, thank you.
This dark area.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so there's, the dark area is uh, the retention pond, just on three-two-five there. It comes now under our driveway, right there, although when it when it gets really raining, it still comes across our driveway, even after a dramatic drainage installation last year. It then comes really about ten feet on the inside of the property line on our side between us and three-three-seven. I don't it doesn't disappear when it gets to the property line between us and what is currently two-twenty-two. So that that entire area of our property
Yep.
is wet year-round. We've accepted it. We have no plans of doing anything with it other than listening to the frog's chirp. Because that's what lives down there. When the rain is really moving, it is not a wetland. It is a flowing stream, um, to the point that our kids float boats down it and do all that sort of stuff. Um, so, again, I'm not saying that any of that cannot be dealt with through the magic of modern engineering. My concern is that if you flip back to the site plan, there's a lot of attention and um, effort that has very clearly gone into planning for the water that comes across four. And there's there's no not even mentioned, the water that comes across, will come across the backside of one, two, and three. Because as I've mentioned, it it comes right down the end of our property. There's an old stone wall there and the water just goes under that and on down the hill. So that, that was one thing that sort of hit my, I thought it was odd when we first looked at the site plan. Um, the the other sort of concern that I have is, and I didn't see this in the engineering notes, so I'll raise it now, is if you go to lot four, proposed lot four. Scroll this down a bit.
Yep.
Sorry.
This is uh, I know. See after your fingers and it just happened. I've got to think that too.
Geez, we need AI.
So due to the the changes, and I'll I'll call, I know that they are technically waivers. Um, the, the applicant has been through a a series of different um, back and forth to the town as his representative called out, all of which I applaud them for, because frankly, the town has not made it easy for this applicant thus far, nor nor should they. But what is interesting to me is that the setbacks for proposed lot four force the house into the extreme corner of the available buildable land. There's no way to put that house anywhere else because of the upland review area and the um, waivers to the application that were made there because of the wetland setback due to the two flowing streams there. Um, and so forth. Certainly appreciate that they're within the setbacks, but uh, as my wife and roommate voiced, um, what that further forces is that the driveway has to be nearly on our property line. The other thing that I suppose it has fallen off, the town records or the the easements have long since run, where the driveway for proposed proposed lot four sits right now is an existing road bed that was abandoned in the seventies after they subdivided the properties up the hill. However, coming back to where we started, that road bed does a really great job of accelerating water. It comes off of the slope on our lot, off of the slope for um, the other lot up the hill there, and it funnels down into a gully right across lot four. Um, and it will, you know, certainly continue to pick up speed as it hits the impermeable layer there. Um, I did have the the opportunity to speak with the applicant last week. Very nice gentleman, didn't, was very approachable and happy to answer any questions that we had. Um, and he's told me that they're they're aware of that and they're considering once and if the HOA is ever in place um, requiring permeable driveways and um, requiring efforts designed to slow down and increase the the ground absorption of the water as it makes its way down the hill. But again, my questions, I won't call them concerns. My questions are, there are some things that we know as property owners exist and are realities of living on this hill that don't seem to have been recorded here. So I, and they are also not called out in the engineering comments. The engineering comments are are certainly things that sounds like town staff and the applicant will work through and happy to come back when those are in front of the in front of the commission, but there were a couple of things that we wanted to make note of that are not referenced there and likely ought to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? We're good. Okay, how about uh, online?
Okay, if anyone has called in online to offer comment on the subdivision application for two-two to Talkeet Notch, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. We have one, we've got a couple of hands raised, so. Uh, Carrie Coyne, if you can't yell, uh, unmute your microsc- uh, microphone, not microscope. Microphone. And uh, full name and address, uh, and address your comments to the commission, please. Carrie? No, we're not hearing any comments from Carrie. Carrie, I see you've unmuted your microphone, but I can't see any comment or hear any comment from you.
Hello, can you hear me?
There you go. Yep.
Yay, sorry, I was calling in and on and on hold on the phone. Thank you. This is Carrie Coyne. I live at two Northington Way. Um, I've reviewed all the documents online and um, thank you, as I go by my husband. Also, thank you for your service. Um, respect also the late hours that you and everyone else is there tonight. Um, but a question, because I was not able to determine from the documents I saw posted, where exactly the, is it Cotswold Lane or Cotswold Way will be coming out. From what I can tell, based on cross-referencing with the GIS from the town, I think it's directly opposite um, Northington Way, which is essentially our private driveway. Northington Way has one home on it. That's ours at the very end of it. Um, in between two other homeowners, um, one in person, another who's on the phone today. So I guess one question I would have is, um, if it has some clarity on where this road exactly would be coming out, um, with some maybe landmarks with the other homes that are on the the western side. Um, being toward two Northington Way, two-two-seven Talkeet Notch, which is the Zoubyries, I think they're on the phone. And then uh, Mr. and Mrs. Stanlin, uh, Jack spoke earlier today. So I don't know if that's a question we can answer now. Um, but if it is, as I suspect, directly opposite our driver, very close to it, these um, water These, um, water issues are of increasing concern to us, um, just given the obvious, um, exacerbation of water flow issues on paved roads. Um, we have extremely high water table, as you have heard um, from our fellow neighbors up the hill on Old Mountain, um, so much so that even riding a bike in the driveway, or sorry, in the grass would leave ruts in the yard. So, um, more drainage issues exacerbated by paved roads directly countered to our driveway, um, would be challenging to manage. And so that's, um, a concern and just, um, getting some more clarity on the location that from privacy, uh, thoughtfulness as well would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're agreeable. I'll go ahead and, and, um, approximate the location. So the existing house is shown on the plan, the dotted. There's a dotted line that shows the existing driveway and there's a call out existing curb cut to be closed. So you can see where the existing driveway is. And the proposed driveway is, is roughly fifty feet north um, of the existing, so the, the proposed roadway, excuse me, is roughly fifty feet north of the existing driveway. So here's the existing driveway and the, so the proposed roadway is, is north. I believe it would fall just north of the two twenty-seven. Uh, driveway, uh, obviously the opposite side of the road. So it'd be, it's in the, it's in this vicinity. Um, as you're looking at the aerial map. Uh, I believe it places it roughly, uh, a hundred feet, uh, south of Northington Way. Again, using, we're using rough numbers. But it's, it's located just north of the existing driveway.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. Do you have any other comments or questions for the commission?
Not at this point. I think you've heard a lot of the, of similar concerns raised. And so I guess just to attach, um, our lens to that as well would be helpful. And we'll continue being engaged as we move forward to try to understand, um, some, how the details will shake out and what their impacts will be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and there's another hand raised, uh, Mohammed Zou Zubari. Uh, Mohammed, if you can unmute your microphone, you can address the commission. Uh, please provide your full name and address and then, uh, comments.
My name is Mohamed Zubari. I'm right on two twenty-seven Talke Notch Road. I just moved there four years ago. I think my main concerns are two. One is the traffic because my driveway is right in front of this two twenty-two Talke Notch. Where this all proposed housing are going to build. And the second concern is the water. Uh, the hu- the house I have is like we were thinking about is the house is quiet, less traffic. Now I see gradually the traffic is more. Now I heard this, uh, when I was reviewing the drawings online. They're like six houses are proposed in front of me. It's going to increase the flow towards my driveway where, where I, it's, it's hard for me to get out of my driveway right now. It's going to be very difficult. Two concerns are just one.
Uh, Mr. Zubari, you lost your audio.
Oh, can you hear me at all?
No, we can. Nope, you're back.
Okay, so my main, I have two concerns. Number one concern is the traffic. Because I just, uh, my house is just in front of the, uh, two twenty-two Talke Notch Road. And my driver is right there. Um, my, my first concern is the traffic. We already have enough traffic on Talke Notch Road because of the route for is always heavy. And people using the Talke Notch Road as a secondary road. And increasing more housing into that area where my house is right there. Which is going to increase more flow of the traffic. And the second concern is about the water. Because my house is at the downside of the house, uh, in the, on the ro- on the mountain. Which is going to be affected because of the six houses you're building in front of me. Which is going to affect the house, which I'm right there.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments you'd like to share with the commission at this time?
No, this should be it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if anyone else has called in to offer comment on two twenty-two Talke Notch, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Madam Chair, there are no other hands raised.
Yeah, thank you. Do, yeah, if, if you want to respond, I know we're going to continue and.
Yeah, I just want to, um, uh, thank the, everybody from the public for, uh, speaking and voicing all these concerns. Um, it certainly uh, makes it easier for us. So as we go through, uh, all of the comments from town staff, you know, we can start looking further into those comments as well. Um, touch base on traffic. Um, this is, it is only five additional lots. So when we talk about traffic, generally speaking, we're looking at, you know, peak hour trips. Um, this is a very, very minimal, uh, traffic increase, uh, again. Um, understanding the concern, you live directly across the street, cars are coming down this road, they need to pull in and out. Um, you're looking at the time that, you know, you leave, assuming that, you know, you're not going to have ten cars leaving from this subdivision exactly the same time that one person is leaving. Everybody travels at different times. Um, as far as the water issues go, um, we are looking into, uh, and the two streams that kind of converge to the existing pond, they're, uh, intermittent high, um, level stream. So during larger storm, during large storm events, they pick up quite a bit of water. They feed that pond, uh, that pond was created, pond is dammed. Um, and then that, uh, regulates some flow down, um, obviously through a culvert under Talke Notch. Um, essentially, we are trying to do, what we're doing is we're mimicking the existing drainage pattern out there. Uh, so whatever is existing for flows, we're trying, we're obviously meeting zero, which is a zero increase in runoff. And what that means is that uh, this new proposed development, we look at it and say, okay, it was all, uh, wooded. It was all, um, or grass, or this amount of it was grass, this amount of it was woods, this was driveway. We take all of those, uh, numbers into consideration. We calculate out what the total flow created by all of that was at certain points. Um, and then from there, we take, we look at all of our proposed changes and everything that we've changed and we make sure that the, the proposed flow after development is the same or less than what the existing development situation was. Um, staff did have, uh, concerns about the basins, um, being at the bottom of the road, the size of the basins. Um, and obviously they are, they're very large basins because it's sixteen acres. Um, we're not obviously changing the sixteen acres. We're trying to limit the total amount of, um, disturbance to the parcel overall, um, as we can. And we're going to continue to kind of look at uh, especially, you know, neighbors' concerns. We were trying to leave quite a, quite a bit of tree buffer. It's an R eighty zone. Um, so we can leave quite a bit of buffer around as many of these proper, properties as possible. Um, so we'll continue to work through and look at how we can maybe reduce that, those limits of clearing, or if we can, uh, kind of shift some things around and house-wise to increase some limits in other locations. Um, I know as far as the, you know, one of the concerns, uh, brought up tonight was the location of the road. Um, that was also a staff comment. Uh, the requirement is that you always want to keep um, roadways at least a hundred and fifty feet apart. That's a traffic standard. That's so that there's ample uh, timing distance between, so if I'm taking a right or a left out of this driveway and you're taking a right or a left out of the one down the road, there's enough distance and enough time for us to realize what the other person is doing. So you don't have accidents in the meantime. Um, currently, we had proposed the roadway at what we thought was the best location, just because of the crest of that hill. Um, the current roadway, um, that we're speaking of, Northington Way, uh, currently serves one house. So while it is a private road, it, it's more or less, again, a driveway, um. And but that is something that we've been working with staff on as well. So we are currently looking at uh, the options. So again, the options are you either separate your driveways as much as you can, so you're, are the private drive in this roadway, or they really need to be lined up directly across from each other. So that when I'm looking out of my car, taking a left or right, I'm staring at the person across from me to know what they're going to do so that there's not a, too much of a gap in distance where accidents do occur. Um, so that's something that we're looking at. Our surveyors are actually going out to shoot site distances to make sure that depending on where we put that driveway, we have the correct site distance, um, now that we are going to move it to meet one of those two requirements. Um, so again, many of these things, um, are already staff comments that we, we are looking into and we will kind of continue to look into some of the new things brought to light as far as, um, you know, maybe the pond to the, to the north and, and how that may affect um, any of this drainage. Again, most of the drainage flows pretty much directly down the hill. Um, it looked like that pond was essentially on the property line on the northern side of this, this project. We were trying to buffer and save as many trees as possible on, on these pro- on these backyards. I'll look at, we can look at the topography and see how, if there's a way that we can kind of manipulate that in some way, um, to better handle the stormwater at the Talke Notch side. I know that the town just did an extensive drainage overhaul at the bottom of Talke Notch right there to manage, uh, stormwater inflows. So be interesting to see if, um, some of these problems that are apparently occurring right at that location are, are improved. Um, but we'll continue to look into all this and next meeting, hopefully have more, more answers for it.
The gentleman in the scrubs was concerned about the buffer. What was your address? Two forty?
To the north. And, and we are and we are, you know, leaving doing our best to leave fifty to a hundred feet of um, of space between those two. Um, I can certainly talk to the applicant about uh, doing some sort of screening, um, on the backs of properties. Um, and the other thing, you know, if, what we can do is we'll look into, um, you know, maybe like where the location of your house sits there. And maybe do, we can look into doing some strategic planting or something, um, to protect it. Understood.
I have a question and I probably shouldn't have asked you this before. So we have six houses plus the existing, the six houses. So it's colonial. Can you just describe it to?
So it's five houses plus the existing. So it's six total.
Got it.
Six total lots. Yep. Um, and currently there is, uh, no set plan for what those houses are going to look like. I would imagine they're not going to be your standard kind of cookie cutter looking houses as the house that is there today is a, is a, has a lot of character and is a very um, old prestigious, um, unique house.
You think?
It was the old Avon, old farms. The same architect, I believe, who designed.
Okay. Was it? Is it? No way. That's so cool. That's what Bill, yeah, the architect, yeah. Um, like three car garages, you think? I was just thinking of the traffic comment.
Correct. Um, this would put these lots of this size would more or less sustain homes that you're looking at, larger homes, three car garages. Uh, which is, I believe why in the applicant did discuss this with us as well about instead of just doing standard paved driveways, doing eight, an HOA that had, you know, pavers and stuff like that, which is a much more expensive undertaking than a standard asphalt driveway, but the homes of, of this size and of this nature would support.
And it's a public water, public sewer?
Uh, no, no, this is all well and septic.
Okay, and you're I was just thinking blasting. I, I just wanted to like high level.
So, um, I don't believe any blasting. Uh, we did, because, so the only, the advantage of the well and septic and soil testing is so, soil testing has been done. Um, so they were, did go out and do, um, that work. Uh, the other thing is with designing houses on hills like this, almost every one of these houses is a walkout, um, you know, basically from west to east. So your dry, your garage is on the it's going to be on the high side and you have a walkout on the low side. Um, so you know, generally speaking, I think we're, we're looking at more or less that it's almost naturally a, a walkout. Um, it's not like we're cutting into the ground to try to make these houses a walkout. They're just the way that the topography best suits this land, that they're best suited to be designed that way. Um, so blasting would be more or less minimal. We've tried to mimic the existing grade for the proposed road as much as we can so that there's not a large amount of cutting and filling. Uh, that's what leads this to a, being a private road over, uh, town road, uh, is basically the increase in the slope. It's a, it's a hill, it's got a steep slope. Um, private road, you can do that. Public road, you can't. Um, so instead of having to kind of cut a long winding, uh, public road in, it's a private road and stuff.
And just curious, so inland wetland looked at this in September, twenty twenty-one?
Yep.
And just timeline, like what happened? It's almost two years.
Um, so, uh, effectively, uh, this actually, the applicant actually owns that house. This is his personal home that he's subdividing. So I think it was more or less just he was not in a, really necessarily a rush to um, to do it. Um, at the same time, his, his existing septic system is actually like on lot number two, um, basically way to the north, uh, west of the house. Um, so in that same time period, we've gone to, um, health department redesigned a plot plan with a septic system and all that so that he could make plans to start, basically move his entire septic system and redo all that. Once he needs this, once he wants to start construction of this. Um, and so different things have kind of come and gone.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Can, do you? Can you come up? Sorry, can you? On the recording, thank you.
I saw something about, this is Brian Kotay again, two forty Talke Notch Road. Uh, that is going to take five years. Is that true? I saw something about five years somewhere.
So they, they have five years to complete the subdivision.
Yeah.
So it, it's by stat, so that's a general, Connecticut general statute, so.
That was the plan, like they're going to drag this up five years.
Well, they don't always go quickly. So the road would go in and then the lots would, a- as the lot sells. Um, then they would develop the individual lot. So, but when the road goes in, then the stormwater improvements would have to be done.
Right.
At the time, um, that the road goes in.
Got it.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, before we do the vote to continue, any last minute questions? We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we'll do the vote to continue and, uh, Shannon, did you tell me? June?
I'm sorry, excuse me. Oh, date, we can go to June twelfth for now too. And then if, uh, Mr. Panico needs additional time, he has plenty of opportunity to let me know in advance of the meeting.
That works. Thank you so much.
Okay. Oh, okay. Motion in a second.
Okay.
Do this, Liz.
Uh, okay, I would like to make a motion to, um, continue the application of Calco Construction for a six lot subdivision of two twenty-two Talke Notch Road with waivers and an R eighty zone till June twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
On favor?
Uh, hi.
Proposed. All right, it's continued. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right, we have one more public hearing. It's an application from Bulwark LLC for change of zone from R eighty to C one, special permit and site plan approval for construction of a self-storage facility. Location on lot eighty-one twenty, eighty-one twenty-two called Highway across from two forty-two called Highway. All right, yeah, okay. I know, okay, so I guess. Take a minute. Thank you for your patience. As we switch the order.
Um, actually wasn't as bad as we thought it might be. My name is Robin Pearson. I'm an attorney with the firm of Alter and Pearson in Glastonbury, Connecticut. And I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Bulwark LLC out of Wheatog, Connecticut. Um, the principals are Matt Morris and David Pulley, both of whom are here. Matt's in the back, David's right there. Um, they are contract purchasers of two parcels known as lot eight one two zero and lot eight one two two on Colt Highway. Uh, the site at issue is approximately five acres. It's located on the north side of Colt Highway. Uh, the site at issue is approximately five acres. It's located on the north side of Colt Highway. And the current owner is Willshire Insurance Enterprises, Inc. You have two applications before you, one is for a zone change, actually I get, well, two. One is for a zone change and the other is for a special permit with site plan. Um. What we're pursuing is a. Change of zone that would allow the possibility of building a self-storage facility. On the property as a warehouse use. Uh, that would be the category that it comes within. The current zoning for this parcel actually comprises two pieces, two parcels, is R eighty. And the proposed zone is C one, commercial one zone. Um, I've double checked with uh Shannon and we propose that you hear these two applications together. And then, of course, you would have to decide them separately. Um, so with that, I'd just like to put on the record that we have posted the requisite sign on the property. And uh you should have already received copies of the uh notices that were sent out as part of the legal notice requirements. Um, what we proposed this evening is to just. Have me begin with some preliminary comments about self-storage as a use. And then uh turn the application over to David Ziyaks. He is our engineer with FA Hesketh and Associates, and he'll go through the site proposal. And describe for you in detail what it is we'd like to do, and he's also going to. Tell you a little bit about the evolution of the site design as we went through many nights. Of of both public hearing and meetings before the inland wetland commission. Um, to get to the point where we did receive a positive wetland approval on March first of this year. He'll also go through for you the staff comments that we've received to date and what our. Initial responses are, we haven't provided a written response yet, but we will do that, it's, you know, happened fairly quickly. Um, also on Zoom from the same office is or able to connect uh. Virtually is Scott Hesketh, he's their traffic engineer with FA Hesketh, and he has provided you. Uh, in the record with an initial traffic report, which was dated April thirteenth. And as of today, he has updated that report. And he can quickly tell you what the change is in that report in response to some of the comments that have been received. From town staff. We also have Mark Dean um from Dean Architects. As our architect on this project, he'd like to go through for you the. Uh, design proposal, which is part of your special permit review that you're going to do as with regard to uh the building. And uh its suitability for this location. And. He'll be joined after that by Donald Jones from Donald Jones Consulting. And Service LLC, this will be a virtual connection. Um. Mister Jones is going to be the operator of this facility, and rather than me try and go through the specifics of how this would work. We think you might be interested in how it will function and the impacts that it might therefore have, or I'd say the impacts it won't have. On um the area. As a result of this, it's a, it's a very benign operation. Um, but he will be the operator and he has a great deal of expertise with self-storage. And he will go through an operational overview, including the restrictions on what can be stored. Hours and typical usage patterns. I'm going to leave you with a sample rental agreement that has been prepared for another project, actually one in Connecticut. Uh, that he provided the applicant with, I'll just put it into the record, but um. It will be adopted, of course, for any conditions that uh might come about as a result of your review. Um, already, the inland wetlands agency has imposed conditions which have to be incorporated into our agreement. Including restrictions on what can be stored on the site. So. Let me just talk a little bit about why we are pursuing the change of zone for this property and why we think it's very important. I'm sorry, appropriate for um the use that we are interested in bringing to this particular site. First of all, I'm sure you must be aware of the fact that self-storage these days. Is a very hot type of development. It's something that's very much in demand by people. I was thinking about it in terms of your plan of conservation and development, and you do. Um, throughout your P O C D emphasize the importance of bringing diversity and housing types. To Farmington. Now, we're not proposing housing for this site. But I will note that one of the major reasons people use self-storage facilities. Is to facilitate the move from single-family homes to multifamily homes. And so in some ways, this sort of falls into um what you hope to achieve. And make appropriate in the town of Farmington, this is a real support service for people who are looking. To downsize and move to multifamily. In fact, I was just going through some periodicals to see what the main reasons are. That people like to use self-storage and they do like to use self-storage. And the main reason first and foremost was for moving. Um, basically to offset the. The um emotional aspects of moving to a new location, it gives people time. To park their belongings in a place and think about what they're going to do with it and how much they'll actually keep. Obviously, it's good for those who are thinking of downsizing, provides an opportunity to do that. And it's also good for people who, because of changes in um their housing needs, have to consolidate households. And it provides an opportunity for them to utilize self-storage and uh deal with that aspect of it. Uh, decluttering is a main reason people use self-storage. Um, also, another thing that comes up is situation where um. Member of a family dies, so it's also a a way of facilitating the change in households. As a result of that and dealing with um the storage of a loved one's belongings. It helps in terms of organizing for a home renovation. A lot of people use it to empty a dorm room and store materials over the summer before their children go back to school. And certainly it's used often for seasonal storage when you have. Now ten Adirondack chairs that don't fold and you don't have a place to put them in your garage, then you can rent a facility like this. So. It's a use that's much in demand, it's a quiet use, and it is importantly, for your consideration, a low-traffic generator. Um, the site is currently zoned for residential development, it's an R eighty zone. That is your most restrictive residential zone. And I think it's fair to say, if you're familiar with that stretch of Colt Highway, it's not a place where someone is. Most likely going to br- build a single-family home. Um, if you. The uses that are allowed by right are single-family and other home uses like a home office. Um, a farm is allowed, home daycare is allowed, but again, it just does not seem like that is. A site that would be um suitable for those types of uses. The area uses around it, and Dave Ziyaks may go into this with a little more detail, but just to keep in mind. Across the street, we have the Tilcon. Um, site, which is zone excavation zone, and they have um, you know, an excavation work going on there. Next to that, um, on the east side is a landscaping um operator. Uh, including with large mulch pile, it appears in the back of that facility. And then further to the east is a tractor trailer or a tractor uh retailer. Um, all that zone is uh, let's see, the C one zone is across the street for the. Um, landscape. Um, facility. The, it's a B one zone for the tractor retail, and I already mentioned that the Til- Tilcon site is E E. Excavation zone. On the north side of our property, the zoning is all residential, but it's all unimproved. Properties. Um, two of the parcels are owned by the town. And uh it's R eighty, R eighty and. Uh, PR, planned residential. So immediately next to us are zones which would be compatible with this change to C one. So we think it's a suitable thing to, for you to consider, given it's uh. Its location and what other uses are allowed. In terms of the C one use, I did point out that it's already located across the street. And when you look at your future land use plan, which is on page one hundred and twelve of your plan of conservation and development. Little hard to read, but it does seem to say that commercial uses are appropriate for this site. So with that, I think what I'd like to do, um, oh, and mention one other thing, another reason, and David will go into this a little more detail. We feel that the um, that this particular use is very well-suited for this site. This site has constraints uh with regard to future development, it's not on water or sewer. It's uh, or certainly not on sewer. Um, it has difficult soils. It has a great deal of um wetland area or upland review area on the site. And as David will go through for you. Um, we've been asked as a condition of approval or required as a condition of approval from wetlands. To put much of the site into a conservation uh restriction. So that further, even though it's five acre site, the amount of area is uh very limited. In terms of future development, so if you were looking to do anything else like a multifamily residential there. Um, there's, you, you wouldn't, you, you wouldn't pencil out financially. And you could not get the parking that would be required for any kind of major use. So that's why we think this is a perfect use for that location. And with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Dave Ziyaks and he'll go, he'll begin. Our tour of the specifics of this particular proposal. David?
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Dave Ziyaks. I'm a professional engineer in principle with FA Hesketh Associates. Are located over in East Granby. And it's nice to be back again. Uh. We've been zooming, we've been hiding, we've been doing whatever, and I know you folks are. One of the few commissions actually that have gone back to all public. Well, you have a hybrid set setup as well, but for the commissions here. And uh, most of the applicants are. So anyhow, um, as Robin pointed out, uh, we have the two lots involved, the eighty-one twenty and eighty-one twenty-two. Uh, the site combined is about four, almost five acres, four point nine nine acres. And um it is uh pretty much undisturbed and uh is moderately wooded. Um. As Robin pointed out, we did go through a very long process with the Wetlands Commission. Um, at one time. Uh, there is a, there is a wetlands corridor that runs pretty much right down the middle of the site. And cuts the site off into a west and east side, and then that wetlands wraps around. Uh, on the east side wraps around the back of our proposed development. Uh, and so um. It isolates this proposed development from that open space area that's behind uh us, as we'll look a little bit on another. Slide soon, you'll see, uh, it's all heavily wooded, open space areas primarily to the north and to the east of us. But um. So at one time, we had initially, we had development on both sides of the wetlands with a crossing. And uh the Wetlands Commission didn't feel that was appropriate, that it was too much impact on the property. And so little by little, uh, working with them, uh, we came to a conclusion of this, this uh layout that you see uh this evening. Where we're focusing entirely on the eastern half of the site. And that's actually a one point four one acre footprint. Uh, so the remaining three point five eight acres uh will be uh put into permanent conservation if this project moves forward. Which is essentially the wetland area and and everything to the west. Will be put into conservation. Um, looking at the layout, maybe uh Shannon, if you could go to LA one, which is, oh, you have it up there now, yes. Um, this is sort of the black and white version of the uh layout plan that's before you, we have one story. Uh, one building that's four stories tall. Um, and uh it's a climate-controlled uh self-storage facility, which I'm finding, we're doing a lot of these around Hartford County. Uh, these self-storage facilities and some of them are a mix, you know, the more traditional kind of one-story. Buildings that we're familiar with, where there's rows of garage doors on both sides, and you can drive your car there. Um, you know, use your own individual rented storage unit. Uh, but what's becoming popular now are these single-story, what they call climate control, and what they do is they control the climate inside the building. So that if you want to store uh more sensitive items, things of that nature, that may not do well. And and the more traditional self-storage, paper goods, furniture. Uh, personal belongings, things of that nature, if you put them in. The more traditional single-story facility and they stay there for a while. You know, in the summer, it's a hundred and ten degrees, and in the winter, it's zero or something, whatever, whatever it is inside those units. Uh, whereas in these climate-controlled facilities, they moderate the temperature, control the humidity. So uh you can be assured that when you put your uh personal belongings in here. Uh, they will be treated much more kindly than in a more traditional. And in this type of facility, there's usually one central loading area, and in this case, all of our loading will take place on the north side of the building. So you won't see any loading from the Colt Highway um as you drive by. Uh, the footprint of the building would be nineteen thousand eight hundred square feet. And when you take all four floors into consideration, the total gross square footage is seventy-nine thousand two hundred square feet. And again, all the loading takes place uh in the rear. In the front of the building, there'll be a small uh management office that would face uh Route Six. And uh there will be one a full-time employee on the site when the facility is open for management and security. So um, maybe Shannon, it'd be not a good time to switch over to the next plan, which is uh colored. And you can see uh. Sort of how this fits. So you can see uh we're, we'll be surrounded on three sides and really across the street as well. By moderate to heavy wooded uh area that is primarily open space and then. To the west of us, that that fairly dense wooded area, that's our western portion of our property that will be put into conservation purposes. Um, what we're looking at doing um is a clockwise circulation, so we have a main driveway in the center, sort of the center of the building. That will be a two-way driveway. So you'll be able to enter into the site from either the west or the east and uh either continue around to the back of the building. For the purposes of a loading and unloading. Uh, or you can stop off at the management office, we have four parking spaces located there. So if there's some reason that you need to stop at the management office to conduct some business or get a question answered. You can do that and then continue around, so we see uh very few people going back out the main driveway, even though we're leaving it as two-way. And then that circulation, certainly any trucks, uh, you know, vans, things of that nature that will want to unload. People's belongings will do that in that nook that, in the L of the building, that's where that will be located. And then when they're done, they'll continue around to the east. And then come back out onto Route Six, and they'll only be allowed to make a right-hand turn there. We thought it was appropriate since it would be a mix of cars and vans and small trucks. That uh we would want them to simply leave the site making a right-hand turn rather than. Introducing another potential left-hand turn out onto Route Six at that location, that seems to work out well, and it's. Acceptable to the owners and operators uh that that type of circulation will work well. Um, the, as far as the parking goes, there's no specific parking requirements in the zoning regs for this exact use. Uh, but the operators tell me that these four spaces should be more than adequate. It uh usually you have your one space for your, your manager. And then, you know, there might be one or two people who might be at this location at any given time. Who are in the office asking questions or signing contracts, you know, to rent the space or something like that, so we really. Have a very low need for parking on the site. Uh, there's uh, the, will be a uh, a small enclosed dumpster area. Right next to the loading area, sorry, that white, you see that little white box right next to those couple of loading spaces there, that'll. Uh, they only need a four-yard dumpster, and it's, it's purely for just miscellaneous. Uh, use by the office, folks here are, will not have a place to deposit any, you know, trash other than. Uh, maybe some paper goods or something like that, but if they, if they, if they want to throw away anything that they've had in the storage unit, they're gonna have to take it with them and. Dispose of it somewhere else other than on-site here. Um, the zoning table uh is on sheet LA one for you folks. And we went through all the various criteria for setbacks, frontage, coverage, et cetera, and all those are met with this. And the uh coverage is allowed in the zone is up to forty percent maximum total uh coverage, which includes pavement and buildings. And we're at just eighteen point two percent uh for the property. Um, the landscaping plan, maybe Shannon, you can go to the next plan. This is uh, it's a little bit of a blow up. Of the uh layout. of the uh layout and now landscape plan. Um, the landscaping is proposed to be, it's a combination. We have mitigation plantings that go all around our perimeter. Because we are surrounded on the west and the north by wetlands. And we worked that out with your wetlands commission. Um, and uh, we have a, as part of our drainage system in front of the building where it's green. Uh, there's going to be a rain garden installed there as part of the stormwater control system. And that will be planted with typical rain garden types of vegetation. And then we have general ornamental plantings uh primarily around the entrance to the building and uh, and then we have some street trees proposed uh along the open area that we'll be creating on uh Route Six. So we think we have some uh nice landscaping to soften, um, you know, the building and the overall site. Um, as if you had a chance to take a look at the landscaping plan. Um, as far as the topography on the site, I mean, both the west and the uh east side. Uh, I call them undulating contours because it's a good word to use. Um, but basically uh the uh underlying soils out here as most of this area on Route Six, particularly on the north side, um, has some uh holy oak rock uh outcroppings with uh anywhere from two to five feet of overburdened soils sitting on top of them. And um, so we've uh carefully analyzed that. What we were trying to do is balance the site such that, you know, we weren't uh over excavating it and having to deal with uh large amounts of rock. And then also not creating any steep slopes and around the entire perimeter on the west and again, the north and a little bit on the east side. We have a retaining wall that uh is all around that perimeter and that minimizes our footprints. Uh, which we worked out with the Wetlands Commission. So there wasn't any further encroachment in the upland review area. We have no uh direct wetlands impacts with this plan. Um, versus, you know, the earlier version that I was talking about that had a crossing of the wetlands, but that's, that was removed. So we're strictly in the upland review area and it took some time to work back and forth to come up with a satisfactory uh encroachment into that area. Um, but we have this topography and um the site plan again, uses the, the uh, the, the idea of the perimeter retaining walls to minimize our footprint. And of course, then that translates into our overall coverage being reduced. Where the building actually takes place uh is where there, there's two or high points uh in the uh, in the topography on the site. Those will be cut down to create a level pad for the building. The building will all be on slab and it will be all one grade. But as you move away from the building a bit, it starts to drop off towards the wetlands nicely for us. So we can create this pad site. Um, and the uh elevation of our building is going to be three eighty-eight, three hundred and eighty-eight. And at the main driveway, it'll be three eighty-five. And then over at the right-hand side driveway will be at three eighty-two. So the grades of the driveways work out to be very nice. We don't have any steep driveways. And of course, you know, the DOT will be heavily involved in the review of the final design of the driveways, but uh, we feel pretty good that uh they will find these to be satisfactory. So all in all, there will be some sun blasting and other rock excavation techniques will be required to create the pad for the building. And then to construct the driveways. And then in order to provide adequate sightline, uh there will be some rock removal uh within the right of way to do that. And we have plans to show you how that would work out, but uh all in all, I think we've done a good job in balancing the site. So that there's not an excessive amount of rock removal necessary. And uh, there's not a lot of other miscellaneous excavations necessary on the site to construct this. There's a drainage system proposed that again was worked out thoroughly with uh the town engineering staff back during the uh wetlands application. And reviewed extensively by your commission members who are very astute at storm drainage design. Very thorough in their review. Uh, everything is uh pretty much underground in detention systems and infiltrator systems. We're actually going to be successful, I think, in some infiltration because where the systems are located behind the building. That's going to be in fill areas between the building and the retaining wall. So I think we're going to be successful in some infiltration, but similar to an early, earlier application you heard tonight, engineers are generally pretty conservative when it comes to those designs and our calculations, like the previous calculations do not take credit uh or consideration in the calculations for infiltration. So we, we're treating this system as purely a detention retention type system in our calculations. And a full stormwater management report was submitted, the application is well and reviewed by staff. Um, so essentially we assure a zero rate and increase off our site. It actually reduces it by, you know, a little bit over existing conditions. And it easily meets the minimum water quality volume standards uh as dictated by uh Connecticut DEP. One of the considerations in the overall design was the sightline analysis along Route Six. This is uh primarily in a very long uh horizontal curve on, on this portion of Route Six. Has an interesting geometry to it and we're on the inside of the curve. Um, so we prepared the sheet SL uh A one that's in your set. Um, and it, that has been submitted to DOT as part of the review of the driveways. Uh, and it's been noted in the uh, the traffic report that our office prepared for you. Um, we believe we, we meet the state's requirements. The sightline distance out here because of the uh eighty fifth percentile speed on this road is measured. Uh, makes these sightlines very long. Um, and that's one of the reasons why we have uh placed our, our exit driveway, our primary exit driveway to the right. Because you're at a position in the curve at that point where you can see pretty much back to the intersection of the Hampton Inn at that location. And then uh, looking at it from the other driveway, our main driveway, looking in both directions, we can achieve the uh, this, this, the sightline. Um, and not at the minimum level either. We can, we can exceed the uh, the levels that are necessary in both directions. And of course, DOT, your staff's had an opportunity to view those and DOT will really, really uh review that extensively um during their uh, you know, review of the overall system. Um, we're going to have a very small onsite septic system. We only have one office and a bathroom for manager and if you're there and you need to use the bathroom as, as a customer, you'll be able to use it. But other than that, uh, we have a very small, probably in the fifty to seventy-five gallon a day range. As Robin pointed out, um, if you were to try to do any kind of multifamily or if you were looking at it from a different perspective, if we change the zone here, what other kind of commercial use could you put on the property? I mean, and within the one point four one acres, because I'm assuming the Wetlands Commission isn't going to grant another use. You know, any more use of the property than was granted for us. Um, one of the limiting factors, it would be the soil on the site and its ability to handle a, you know, a relatively large septic system. That's not going to happen. So uh, something is uh, so if you want to use the word benign, is this, is this use is a perfect use for this from that perspective because we, we need such a small um septic system. We are planning though on extending the water main, the Connecticut Water Company Water Main down Route Six to the east. It's about seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty feet. And the main reason for that is we need uh fire flow for the building. We need, the building will be entirely sprinklered and we'll have hydrants. And uh, they're really the only way to accomplish that is to go down and get the public water main. Fortunately, when they built the apartments at two ninety-nine, they extended the water main to Route Six. Thinking that um, because the water main comes in from the back way. And which would be from the north, I guess. Uh, they did extend it out uh to Route Six. So we'll have to go down and pick that up and uh our goal is to bring it up the shoulder of Route Six. Uh, Connecticut Water likes that. Our friends at MDC don't like that very much, but Connecticut Water likes that. So we'll probably come up uh, the shoulder of Route Six will provide a hydrant or two up along the way. And then that would provide the ability possibly to extend it further to the west, maybe towards the Bristol area or maybe pick up some of these other commercial uses along the way that are currently probably on wells. But that's for another day, but it would provide that opportunity for uh public water in the area. Um, I think at this point, what I'd like to do is since staff did raise a couple of questions with the traffic report and maybe the commission has some in mind too. Scott is online and I thought maybe he might want to say a few words about the traffic report at this point. And uh, maybe fill in any gaps that I have with my sightline presentation or whatever. Scott, are you there?
Hi, Mr. Yes, thank you, David. Um, yes, um, my name is Scott Heskey. I am a professional engineer with the firm of F A Heskey and Associates, East Granby, Connecticut. Author of the April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three traffic report, which has been submitted for uh as part of this application. Uh, we've also submitted the traffic report to the Department of Transportation along with the aforementioned intersection site distance plans for, for the DOT's review. Um, when we prepared our report, we obtained um traffic volume counts from the Department of Transportation for Route Six out in front of the site. Uh, those counts conducted during September of twenty twenty-one indicate average daily traffic volumes of twenty thousand six hundred vehicles. Uh, and the peak hour volumes are in the range of uh eighteen hundred to nineteen hundred vehicles uh during the morning and afternoon peak hours. And in terms of the trip generation from our particular site. It's not a very traffic intensive use. Based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Report. Projecting peak hour volumes of seven trips during the morning peak hour. Twelve trips during the afternoon peak hour. And thirteen trips during the Saturday peak hour. Uh, on a daily basis, uh, we would project uh a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and forty trips on a daily basis, which, which I think is pretty high. Um, those are probably the types of uses you get when the facility first opens and they're, they're going gangbusters leasing it out. Um, most people, although they love their stuff, they don't tend to visit it as often as uh, as these numbers suggest. So uh, in terms of capacity analysis calculations. Um, our traffic report uh indicates that um, vehicles exiting the site. Um, it'd be difficult to make a left-hand turn out uh because of the high volumes of traffic on, on Route Six. So the main site driveway approach projecting to operate at level of nervous E or F during peak hours. Uh, during the afternoon peak hours, a level service F with delays of about fifty-four seconds per vehicle. Which uh really on Route Six is not too bad. Uh, the traffic volumes exiting the right turn only driveway. Site driveway approach would operate at a level service B. B as in boy during peak hours with delays less than fifteen seconds per vehicle. Um, but our traffic was distributed, um, entering traffic we had projected at fifty percent, making a left-hand turn in. And fifty percent making a right-hand turn in at the main site driveway. Uh, the exiting traffic we have ninety percent exiting via a right-hand turn and ten percent exiting via a left-hand turn because of the site's circulation. Uh, the only way you can make a left-hand turn out of the facility is if you're one of the few people that use the parking spaces in front of the office and have the ability to exit back out to, through the main entrance to make a left-hand turn out perhaps. Uh, if you go past the parking spaces and around the back of the building, that is a one-way circulation. And when you reach the uh second driveway there, you are restricted to right-hand turns exiting the facility. Um, some comments from town staff, they did uh indicate that our April thirteenth letter, the uh directional distribution in the write-up of the report was slightly different than in the uh turning movement diagrams that were included in the report. That was an error on our part. We had written the report on a previous version of the plan. When we changed the um movement diagrams, we neglected to modify the the directional distribution in, in the uh, in the text of the report. So we have submitted at least electronically an updated traffic report, the, the text of the report updated uh today's date. Uh, town staff also asked a question about the accident data out on Route Six. We had not previously provided that. Uh, but we did provide a, a level of, I'm sorry, a summary table of accident data uh on Route Six. Which covers the uh, the area from the uh driveway to the apartment complex uh to the east of us, all the way over to and I've misplaced my glasses, all the way over to the um, the intersection of um I think it's Riverside Drive uh on, on, on the west side of us. Uh, I won't go through the accident data but in, in detail. There were only two accidents involving uh the commercial driveways located on Route Six in this vicinity. Most of the accidents occurred at the signalized intersection um of the apartments and, and Waterside Drive. Uh, town staff asked about the possibility of installing traffic signage out on Route Six to warn vehicles of the uh location of these driveways. Again, Route Six is a state highway. We have submitted to the Department of Transportation for their review and approval. Uh, if they believe signage is appropriate, I'm sure, I'm sure they will, they will ask us to install such signage. Um, I've reviewed the sign catalog from the Department of Transportation. I did not find any specific signage which would be applicable to this particular area. But uh, the DOT may know of some that uh, that, that I'm not aware of. And in fact, speaking with the fact that we're providing the intersection site distances at the two-site driveways. Uh, we're meeting the DOT minimum requirements. That allow all vehicles entering and exiting the site to see and be seen by approaching traffic on Route Six. So everyone should be aware of the fact that the that these drivers are here and that uh vehicles will be entering and exiting on occasion. Um, that, that's enough of the uh traffic report. If you have any specific questions related to traffic, I'll be happy to uh, to address them.
All right, thank you.
Again, Dave Ziyaks, just very quickly, um, wanted to mention about sight lighting. Uh, it's going to be very modest. We have some light standards at both driveways, typical uh, as staff noted, I think we had it labeled at fifteen feet. Uh, the fourteen-foot high is, is the maximum and uh, that's more of a drafting area, I think. So we will be providing those there. And then there will be uh wall pack lighting on the building itself, primarily in the back. Uh, those will be shielded downward. I know uh, in particular, the Wetlands Commission was very sensitive about us not having spillage over into the wooded areas and the wetlands around us. Um, so um, uh, we believe that uh, that will not be the case. We'll continue, that was one of the staff comments. We'll continue the discussion with them about that. Just to make sure everybody's comfortable with the analysis, to make sure that there is no spillage off the site, but it will be very modest. And the lighting, uh, once they, we'll hear from uh, um, probably Donald later. Uh, the idea is that uh, this facility will close. I think it's nine o'clock at night. And once that happens, the security will be, uh, lighting will be toned down to just the bare-bones security. I'm sure the police department will want some lights on around the back of the building and maybe at least the light standard or two in the front. So as they inspect the properties in their normal fashion, uh, they're not dealing with a a completely dark property, but uh, we can talk about that some more. Um, so at this point, I think I'd like to turn the presentation over to our architect, Mark Dean. Um, who will go over the elevations and uh, and other architectural details. Uh, we did mention the staff comments. Those were dated May eighteenth. Um, there are a number of them, but I would say that they are, in my opinion, at least fairly minor. And uh, will not require major changes to the plans that we're presenting this evening. But a bunch of touch-ups and answer some questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Mark Dean. I am principal at Dean Architects. Our office is located at three two eighty-four Walden Avenue in Depew, New York. Um, we have specialized in self-storage facilities uh for about fifteen years now. Uh, we do them all over the country. I'm licensed in thirty-four states that we've completed projects in. Um, so as Dave mentioned, uh, the footprint of this building is uh around nineteen thousand eight hundred square feet. Uh, over four floors. That gives us a total of seventy-nine thousand two hundred gross square feet. Um, and uh, the building is divided up into roughly seven hundred storage units. And uh, they vary in size from a five by five by eight to uh ten by thirty. Um, and uh, virtually every size uh in between. Uh, there is, uh, do, do we have a floor plan available or, or not?
I was never provided a floor, floor.
Okay.
So for quick reference, um, there is a, a small office area located in the front of the building adjacent to the uh parking spots uh that Dave mentioned. This is rough.
This is roughly uh nine hundred square feet. Uh, there's a rental office as well as a private office and a restroom facility. There are two loading areas, uh, both are in the back of the building. Uh, both are sort of tucked into this back corner. Uh, each of the loading areas is covered with an open canopy. Uh, allows people to back up to the building. Um, bring their stuff inside the loading area and either go to their first floor unit. Or there's two elevators, one in each of the loading areas that it gives you access to. The upper floors. The elevators are keyed, so. If you have a unit on the third floor. When you punch your number in, you can only go to the third floor to go to your unit, so it uh. It restricts people from sort of being able to travel throughout the building uh as a whole. So in addition to those two loading areas, there's a number of outside access units. Which uh goes across the back, those units are all uh the same size, they're ten by twenty-fives, they have an outside roll-up door. Uh, so a vehicle can pull up next to the unit. And so you have direct access to those units without coming into the building. The exterior, we have um. The rendering. Uh, on the on the screen. The exterior is an insulated metal panel. Which is a three-inch thick uh foam insulated panel. Uh, that gets applied to a metal stud frame. Um. It has an embossed finish. Uh, the colors uh that we're showing are a darker blue and uh in off-white color. There is not a gloss finish, it's a more of a matte finish and it is embossed, so it doesn't have a lot of reflectivity. Uh, the panel uh on the two end pieces and at the uh main entrance is a vertical. Um, ribbed panel. Uh, the lighter colored panel uh is the embossed finish panel. The roofing is a standing seam metal roof. Uh, we're gonna end up uh on this project with a color that's called polar white. It has a solar index uh. Level of eighty-two plus, which uh is. Above and beyond the uh the mech, the minimum requirement. Which I believe is seventy-eight. The building is fully sprinklered, uh, it will have a six-inch line. Um, the way the building is built, it's roughly ten feet from floor to floor. The tops of the units are at eight feet. There's a wire mesh that's put over the top so that the sprinkler system, which is located above, is just a general sprinkler system, the heads are at ten to twelve-foot spacing. Uh, the wire mesh allows any water should the sprinkler head go off to go into any unit that's uh that needs that. Uh, the electrical demand for this type of project is fairly minimal. Um, typically, it's around a six hundred amp uh three-phase service. The HBAC uh. Is a uh split system where there's furnaces on each floor uh. With a condensing unit outside, so there's no rooftop units, uh, there's nothing to be placed on the roof. Um, the the uh condensing units will be placed on pads outside, the furnaces are inside the building. The building's maintained. Daily uh from a temperature range from fifty-five. Uh, to eighty-five. Uh, there's humidity control, the humidity's. Control between fifty percent and seventy percent. Um, so self-storage, uh, I I guess has become a very popular item. Um, when we look at the growth of self-storage over the past twenty-five years. In the late nineties and early two thousands, uh, self-storage was at roughly. Three to four square feet per capita. Uh, today, self-storage is at. Somewhere between seven and eight square feet per capita, twice of what it was. Twenty years ago, the projection right now, within the next ten to fifteen years, is self-storage will be at. Ten to thirteen square feet per capita, so there's gonna be continued growth. Um, we know that when people get a unit and. Was mentioned previously why people get units, various reasons, typically when people get units, they hold on to them, we've talked to people who have had. Self-storage facilities for. Twenty-five years, they still have their first client. Uh, that stays, so. There's definitely a demand, uh, and it's an increasing demand, and um we hope that this uh facility will. Uh, meet today's demands for this area. Yeah, so that uh.
That's like, so.
Okay, there we go, look at that.
Both of them were in the uh presentation.
Magically, the windows disappeared. So we have some, we got some initial comments if on on the previous slide, the 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 yellow color was a little bold. Uh, there the a little too much glass, so what we did is we uh we we toned down the glass, we took the glass off the. Corners against the buildings, uh, we toned down the doors that you see um. Uh, from uh the bright yellow to uh to a medium tone gray. Now, so that they they don't jump out as much. So as I mentioned, uh, self-storage is a growing business, it's a very competitive business and. How most of these facilities get their customers is somebody knows where it is, they drive by it. Self-storage customers usually come within a three to five-mile radius of the facility itself. Uh, people don't travel much further than that to go to a facility. So we try to present a facility that um is appealing. Uh, but also very recognizable, that we want people to know what that building is when they drive by it. Uh, and so often you'll see on these newer designs, the. The doors behind the glass that and they're lit, they're lit at night, but those will turn off with the uh. With the sight lighting that turns off too, so at nine o'clock, pretty much everything shuts down. Uh, in that regard. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, if uh I would just. You know, we're interested in any comments that you have, of course, and obviously you're going to share those with us. So I mean, if there are any comments about um. Things that you might like to see a little different on the building, we would certainly be amenable to um considering those. I know I've said to the architect that I actually like the buildings on the uh the windows on the corner, not with yellow doors, but. I did like the windows on the corner, so. If if there is something that would make the difference between an approval or not an approval that you could share with us and is important to the commission. Um, we just want you to know that that door is open. The um next person we'd like you to hear from. Is Mr. Jones, Donald Jones, and if you could bring him up. Um, he's going to very quickly just go through um some of the. Operational issues, if there are any more, or not issues, but uh restrictions that we place on tenants. Um, things like that, that and they answer any questions that you might have. Um, we have gone through this a little bit, but he may have a little bit more to offer. And just to remind him, I have provided a copy for the record of the uh typical contract that we have, which is very thorough. It's um very rigorous, it's about eight pages with all kinds of restrictions and requirements, so this is. A very regulated operation. Um, but uh if we, if if Don is there.
Uh, yes, ma'am, I'm here.
It's all yours.
All right, perfect. Um, I appreciate you taking some time this evening. Um, I wanted to share a few things I think is uh important. I've been around the industry now for twenty-nine years. Uh, we've owned our own business for eighteen years. The intention of creating our business to was to help individuals uh such as the applicants of this particular process. Uh, over the last eighteen years, we have been a top operator, meaning um. Or a top one hundred operator within the country relative to self-storage uh. Uh, management opportunities. Um. In all my years that I've been working and we've worked in forty-two states and all the years we've been working, this is one of the best teams that I've seen overall. Uh, and I hope you appreciate uh the dedication that they've had to this project and uh their presentations this evening. It is one of the best that I've seen. And so I hope you will pay them the uh appropriate amount of respect to what they've done on your behalf. Trying to uh protect the this particular area. And uh work with all of the uh the municipalities involved and the uh the governmental agencies that are involved. Uh, I do know, uh, I think there's been a number of things mentioned, I just want to reiterate, I think it's important. Uh, Mark brought up uh the fact that the square footage per capita around the country is uh seven to eight square feet per capita. I did the initial feasibility study in this market, this market operates closer to three and a half to four percent square feet per capita. It's half of what it really needs to be, uh, hence uh why the developers have decided to come in. To try to pursue this opportunity. Uh, right now, self-storage is in a position that we want to accommodate customers that are within three miles of a particular subject market. Uh, every market is different, I live in Fort Worth, Texas, by the way. So I do a lot of work in Texas, that would be uh be appropriate. But when we're dealing with customers and their drive time, uh, I have been to Connecticut many times, we finished a project in New York the other day, I've worked in Connecticut. I've worked in Boston, we did a five-story project, we're working on a massive conversion in Maine, Delaware, et cetera. So I'm very familiar with, and I try my absolute best to work with the municipalities as well. But when we did the feasibility study initially, we were at half the square footage per capita that we needed. When customers drive, they want to drive within uh about three miles of their property. Uh, because if you have to go in this particular area of five miles, it could take you half an hour or better to get to uh your destination. Um, this particular project being a hundred percent climate control, it changes the entire MACHA of your customer base. Where you might have concerns uh with a particular uh tenants uh. Who move into drive-up uh units, that you have a facility that has four, five hundred outside drive-ups units. These are not the customers who store here, the customers who store here are people who have things. In their garage that might belong in the house, these are truly household goods that store in a climate-controlled facility such as this. Uh, they don't generally, uh, they would not generally store anything that would be. Uh, specifically designed to be in a garage. Uh, relative to lighting, that was brought up, we're uh very sensitive of the lights on the project, but lights denote security. And so to to tone down the lights too much uh is actually a security risk, especially for our female uh clients and tenants. Females want to feel secure, and so lights on the back of the property, at least around the loading and unloading area. Uh, are very important. Um, we have uh relative to commercial traffic, because we don't have. Drive-up storage units, we don't have commercial traffic. So you will in fact have people with U-Haul trucks or such who will store here, but you will not have people who have. Uh, big commercial equipment that's gonna be coming and going uh into this particular property, everybody's gonna be homeowners, they'll be driving their. The trucks or cars or uh maybe some trailers, but not anything that would be considered commercial. Um, this particular facility, um, it was mentioned that uh you guys have a copy of the contract, this contract is uh specific to Connecticut. We are a member of the of the Northeast Self-Storage Association. Uh, so this takes care of a bunch of the northeastern states, not just one state. And the contract is approved by them as an organization. We are also a member of other organizations, the Texas Self-Storage Association. Them and the Florida Association are the two uh most prevalent and sought-after organizations in the country. Uh, we just went to a legal seminar the other day regarding what we can and cannot do at a at a facility. And uh so we do have experience in dealing with uh the legal side. Of what can and can't be stored and how we react to customers uh in that particular aspect. Um, it was brought up by Mark relative to the security on the property. You can only get into the area that you're supposed to, and that includes the first floor too, you can come into the vestibule. But you can still only get into the floor where you belong, which also is going to limit uh greatly the ability for somebody to come in and. Wander around the facility that doesn't belong there. Um, we will have an operation uh where we have a manager on site, uh, the manager would uh be working uh plus or minus forty hours a week. The office hours more than likely will be from nine to five, Monday through Friday, and from nine to two on Saturday. The uh hours of access would be from six AM to nine PM, seven days a week. Um, the facility shuts down at that point, so everything would lock down and prevent anybody else from coming into the facility. Um, so that would be the operating hours. Uh, everything else is pretty typical to uh just a retail environment, we consider self-storage to be retail in nature. And so we want to be up close to the customers. Uh, again, this particular product, I think, uh, will enhance the area as designed uh by the staff or by the. Team that has put this together, so uh certainly we will be the best-looking project uh. Or at least from across the street, if nowhere else. Um, relative to other operating questions you might have, I'm certainly available to answer those. Um, but the facility would be operated by a group who's been managing self-storage for the better part of twenty-nine years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don, um. At this point, we are able to uh conclude, I can go through your standards you have to consider. But uh I'm assuming you might have some questions for us. Um, perhaps whatever you want, Shannon, we should take those now or?
Uh, it's the chair, so.
Yes.
It's okay, chair, so there's uh certainly commission questions and it is a public hearing, so uh.
Oh, I, of course, I forgot about the public, I'm so sorry.
So. There's a few, there are a few things to uh attend to.
Yes, all right, so thank you very much, and uh the presentation was thorough, which we appreciate. Uh, we appreciate that you have everyone available for questions, and let's get started. Matt. I know, I'll change next time.
It's okay, I'll go, I'll I'll um. Just I'll key in on the the zone change part of it, so you mentioned. Uh, the increase in demand for self-storage and most of the customers are within three miles. So it's curious, like how, I feel like we have a decent amount of self-storage here in Farmington. Is there? Uh, current customers who don't currently have access to storage, because they're sold out and. We just need more self-storage to meet the needs of people looking for self-storage and it's just sold out?
I am not going to presume to answer that, so I'm going to turn to Mr. Pulley, David Pulley, and you'll have to come up and. State your name for the record and.
My name, my name is David Pulley, just one anecdote, I was um at at the Wetlands Commission, I had to. You know, get the certified mail um. Letter taken care of, and so I went to the Weetog post office and she asked, the lady at behind the counter asked me. Oh, what are these certified mailings for? And I told her, well, we're dealing with a Wetlands Commission and uh in the town of Farmington. To potentially build a self-storage uh facility, and she said, my nephew just moved out of state. And he had to find a self-storage and and he was moving to Simsbury or Avon or something like that, somewhere in the Farmington Valley. He had to go on the far side of Torrington. To find a self-storage facility that had one vacancy. So, I I think there is a a demand and there's there's certainly an undersupply. So, just from that little anecdote. Thank you.
Uh, okay, great, thank you. Um, so just quickly to confirm. That the two properties across the street are already commercial, right? Number two, three, two, and two, four, two. One was a landscaper, one was an tractor trailer, and one's an excavation.
Correct.
And then, I was curious about the town farm, I think it was on the same side of the street, if you will, eight, six. Eight, six, nine, two, four, eight, and eight, one, two, eight. I just wanted to confirm what those zones were.
The zone eight, six, eight, six is R eighty, which is the same zone as the current site. And eight, one, two, eight is R eighty. And nine, two, four, eight is uh PR.
So eight, eight, six, eight, six is uh. Those are private property owners?
That's the town of Farmington.
Town owned, town owned both of those.
So, okay.
I've just.
So let's, here, so we're gonna get, so eight, six, eight, six is already owned by Town of Farmington.
Got it.
Nine, two, four, eight is RDM. Owned by Town of Farmington, it came to us as part of the two ninety-nine Colt Highway Development. I'm sorry, um, Commissioner, I, what other property were you here?
Uh, I think I had eight, one, two, eight.
Eight, one, two, eight, yep, is here, and this is R eighty, and it is privately owned.
Okay. It's not a but, okay, all right.
Uh, it abuts at the very, well, Poplar Bars Road comes through, they the old right-of-way for Poplar Bars. Uh, it abuts at the very, well, Poplar Bars Road comes through, the the old right-of-way for Poplar Bars Road comes through. Uh, and immediately, but. Eight, one, two, oh, which is part of the, so eight, one, two, oh, and eight, one, two, two are part of the development being considered.
Okay, understood.
Okay.
Um, I just had, so, you know, if anyone has any zone change type questions, I'll I'll hold my site plan for for after.
Are you sure?
Yeah, that's fine. Do you want me to go with to all of them?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So does the buil- the building height is? Is it fit our requirement? I know there's some commentary about it now. It. It seems like a tall building for that section of. Of town, right? Like you're coming up Colt Highway. It looks like. Again, just from me being a commissioner here, a very large warehouse in that section of town. So. Is is that the height you're you want and you need that height?
Well, we need the, we need the height. There's no, there's no question about it. In order to obtain the uh the four floors. Uh, and because of the site restrictions and the limit of the footprint is why we need to go vertical. Uh, and what it allows us to do is have, you know, roughly between nine foot six and ten feet um. Floor to floor. We went through the height calculations because it was brought to our attention. We made a couple minor adjustments. Uh, went full perimeter, averaged all the eaves. Right now, we're at thirty-nine point nine. Maximum is forty. So it's, the forty is permissible, uh, and we're we're just below that.
Got it. Okay. Um. Good. Yeah, good.
One interesting aspect of that is we were actually. For the self-storage or for the climate-control building, we were at a lower elevation. But we had more square footage over on the west side. And and as far as the overall um feasible and prudent alternative argument or debate that went on with the Wetlands Commission. Uh, one of the, one of the suggestions and really what drove us to a taller building was. Taking that square footage that was over on the west side and making this building taller and. And putting the storage in there to make this an economic, still an economically viable project.
I understand.
Yeah, so it was kind of an interesting twist as to how we got to the height that we're at.
Is the entire thing thirty-nine point nine? There's no, nothing that's higher? Okay, all right. Thank you.
And no rooftop, you, nothing on the roof, right? Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
About elevator and stair stairwell tower?
My understanding is no, right? Elevator, storage tower, to access the roof?
No, there's no access to the roof. Well, there, there's a um.
Hatch.
Roof hatch.
There's a hatch.
One of the stairways. But there's nothing on the roof. Really nobody to access it.
And elevator?
Elevator doesn't go to roof. There is an elevator penthouse. Um, that is slightly above um. The, the front elevation.
Why don't you come up and speak into the?
So when I, when I say thirty-nine point nine, that that's an average. It's an average roof height. When you look at the front, uh, there, there's a sloped roof in the front that's uh at roughly forty-five feet. The main roof line across the front is roughly at forty feet. The main roof line across the back is. Jogs a little bit, but it it varies between, I think, thirty-seven, six and thirty-eight, six. So it's an average roof height as calculated based on your code. Uh, and again, that averages out to thirty-nine, nine.
Got it. Is there documentation showing what you just described?
We just, we just went through this exercise last night. We sent the documentation in actually today.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, no.
I have it, I have it with me.
Understood your point. Forty-five feet in front of the building, right on the road.
Right.
Is uh, yeah, I'll leave at that. Um. So. Individuals drive around back. Loading, there's no vehicle storage on site or any other sort of, we're gonna rent U-Haul trailers or anything else, that type of use happening on this site?
Okay, no renting.
Okay. Um, so I have some questions. The other thing, so. Taking a left turn out of the property seems dangerous, right? So just walk me through. Walk me through that again. Like, why is, wh- why do we not need a a traffic signal there?
Well, uh, first off, this is Scott Haskett. Um, we've got a peak hour volume of about twelve or thirteen. And the left turn volume would be about four or five an hour, maybe six. Uh, certainly would not warrant a traffic signal. Um.
Let me ask you, like, how many cars come, what what's the? What's the congestion of vehicles going up and down Route Six during peak hours? I think you mentioned that the. Car number before I missed that, I think.
Well, according to the DOT counts, we're looking at about. Uh, during the morning peak hour, about eight, one thousand eight hundred and sixty. During the afternoon peak hour, about nineteen hundred.
Right, and you're saying only twelve to fifteen cars are may take a left. So we're okay without a traffic light?
I'm saying we're gonna have a total of thirteen cars and total half of them entering, half of them exiting. And half of the exiting ones, if you allowed them to, would probably want to take a left. Um, we don't, we're restricting most of our traffic to right turns exiting. So we're only looking at one or two left turns during a peak hour. Maximum.
Yeah, okay. Um, I think I'm, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Yep, we got it. Scott?
So the, I'm gonna stick with that topic for a second. The left turns are happening right in front of the office space. Is that? Where those are happening? Because the other one's requiring a right turn?
That's correct. The 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 only opportunity to make a left-hand turnout would be. On the westerly driveway in front of the office. And you would only be able to access that driveway if you stopped into the office to do some business. And decided to leave, uh, you know, with, if you went around back to uh store any items or to. Or or to do some work inside the warehouse to visit your 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 stuff, then. Because of the one-way circulation, you must exit the. Easterly Drive, and therefore you must make a right-hand turnout.
I I think that's really the key. The the only. People that are allowed to make a left-hand turn is somebody that went to the office.
Right.
Spoke to somebody at the office and then left without going into a unit. Once you go past that parking area. Then you're, you have to continue around the building. You have to make a right-hand turn going out.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't know, I had a similar reaction to Matt. The building. The building feels really large to me for that spa- for that part of town. Um. I understand the economics of it. I also feel like it doesn't, it still doesn't architecturally fit with anything in that area, but I feel I'm worried it's going to. And this is more of a comment than a question, I guess, but. That it's gonna stand out quite a bit in that area. Um, just looking at that picture, that's, that's my initial reaction. Um, I also wanted to ask a question about lighting. So all the lighting is shutting off at nine o'clock when the, when the building closes down, including? The glassed-in portion there?
The glassed-in portion will turn off. There will be a a security light in the office, a nightlight in the office, and there will be some exterior wall packs that stay on. Uh, just to give it. A a a more security, a secure area.
Okay, and will those have dimmer switches?
Not dimmer switches, no. They'll be um. Probably a eight hundred lumen. Uh, thirty-five hundred Kelvin light, so it'll be a soft, warm light. Fairly low. And they'll be shielded, they they are shielded.
Okay. Uh, I think I'm good for now. Thank you.
Okay, Liz.
Uh, this might be a question for Shannon. Um, in in associate, I also wrote a big, the word big next to four stories. Uh, is there, is it possible to see back down Route Six towards like the hotel? Like, what's the height of that? And um, just a little bit of a comparison? Or?
Uh, I can pull it for you. I don't have it.
Oh, you do?
Okay. So uh, offhand, I don't, no, I think the uh, I. I think the hotel and I think the apartments at two ninety-nine are three-story.
They're three.
Um, the peak, the apartments have a peak roof. I don't know the height to the peak offhand. I could.
Okay.
But I can certainly look it up and get that information for you.
Uh, I'd be curious to know. I know that the hotel scene, it's kind of set back, so it's, even if it was four stories, it's not as. Right there, close to the, close to the road. And um. The other thing is, i- if this goes through and everything, then you'd have to come back for signage and and lighting and all that, correct? So. We'll, we'll talk about that later.
Was that part of the sign?
Uh, there isn't a formal signage package uh included as part of the application, so that would be separate.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. That's, that's, okay.
Uh, got a couple things here. Um. The idea that it's gonna be a right-hand turn, um. I understand what you're saying, but there's a desired path. People are going to take anyways. Um, cuz that's. It's a lot of uh, a lot of Route Six. You have to travel to turn around to come back. If you're coming, if you want to go to the, to the east. So what you're gonna have is people that turn around. In the tail con parking lot. That just take that first left after that initial right. Um, so you have, you have the exact same situation. Um. So I don't know if there's something you can do to control that. I I don't know if that's, you know, something we can consider. Um, I do have another question about the security. Is this gonna be gated going into the back?
It's not gated.
So people can go back there after it's closed?
You can go back there after it's closed, but you cannot get into the building.
Okay.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, yeah, okay. Okay, um. And I I do. Agree that it is R eighty. And it's not really appropriate for residential. I don't see houses going in there. Yeah. Uh, I do see this as a good, proper use for this parcel. I I do share some of the commissioner's concerns about the size of the building. Uh, but aesthetically, I think it is a pleasing structure. Um, and given the kind of the character with, you know, gravel pit and open pits, uh. You know, mulch piles, i- it's, if anything, it's an improvement. So. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, James?
Um, I don't think I have anything additional. I mean, I I have similar concerns to my fellow commissioners about about the size of the building. I mean, obviously, and the um, just the. Uh, while the building is very pretty to look at, um. You know, not necessarily totally reflective of of certain things that are, that are, you know, up and down the street. Um, so if we can potentially work in some um. Some architecture that's more uh. Typical of Farmington. Um, I think that that would, that would work. Um. Um, before I forget uh to piggyback off of what Matt said. Um, there, I think you may have said this already, but there's cameras all around the facility and in the back, so.
In inside and out.
Yeah, so when the building's closed, like kids can't go back there and.
Right, you can see, you can see all the way around, and those cameras can be accessed remotely, so that the manager always has. And they'll get a notification if somebody goes onto the property after hours. It'll show up on their, on their phone.
Um, yeah, so. Getting back to the size of the building, I think the height, um, need to, need to work on that a little bit and and try to figure out if there's any uh, any way to compromise on that, but. Other than that, that's, that's all.
I mean, just a real brief comment on the height, the the height does meet the the code requirement. It.
The code average?
It's, the code is average.
Uh, we haven't seen, so staff hasn't seen, and in fairness, the applicant got comments late. I I think it's self-evident regarding the.
Yeah.
The, the, the timing and just the night of the, right? So. They did get comments towards the end of the week. I have not seen the revised calculations. Staff will need to take a look at that. So, but yes, the maximum building height is forty feet.
Yep.
And it does discuss how it is to be measured in the definition, so we'll have to review that.
Thank you.
You're all set? James?
All good.
Okay, thank you.
No questions.
Okay, um, I have some questions, not in any particular order. Uh, let's see here, where do I start? Is this um? Do you have any others in Connecticut? Okay, so first in Connecticut, and, you know, I saw it first as a, you know, storage. And then I opened the file and I said, wow, you mean storage. It's uh large for sure. Um. My husband and I have a storage unit when we downsized. Four years ago. I have not been there. He goes there often. So I get it. Uh, we went to Avon because of traffic. Uh, Route Four, Route Six. I'm concerned about the size. I get that the volume is probably not gonna be a lot. It's a, just a tough road. Route Six is a tough road, and especially, and I don't think the traffic. And I don't, I can't remember how far everything is, but um, Pinnacle? Are we far from Pinnacle? Because that's where a lot of problems happen.
I can bring the aerial up. That's gonna be easier.
You gotta kind of get up the hill.
You know, pass by. The double A, like, I don't know if anyone that travels the speed limit. Um, but I will continue, but I was concerned about Pinnacle for sure. The impact to it. Um, the leases, I should have probably paid more attention. Is it like short-term? Or is it a annual commitment or? It is short-term, okay. Like, uh, if somebody doesn't pay, would, at your other facilities, do you um, do auctions or anything? Like, what would that look like?
Well, they get locked out. If somebody doesn't pay, they get locked out. And uh, if somebody doesn't pay, typically after three to four months, then the unit would go up for auction.
And we have enough space if to hold an auction in the back?
The auctions are rated, rated the unit inside the building.
That, that has changed. Let me step in just for a second. So um, auctions are no longer held uh in person. They're all done online. So the auction process would be the, when the time came, we would cut the log, take photos. Take a quick inventory, put it online. There's three different auction companies. And the winning bidder uh online uh would be able to come pick up the goods. So we don't have a process where ten, fifteen, twenty people come into the location. The uh, the, the program that everybody is familiar with would be Storage Wars on TV, which is a hundred percent farce. It it's not real. It's a show, and it's not, it's not uh what we do today.
Thank you. All right. Um, we'll look for the auctions, all right? Um. The whole security thing, so, all right, so everything kind of shuts down at nine. But someone could enter this outside, not the site inside, so that's good. So the manager gets some kind of text or something. There's a process? What, there's maybe police monitoring or something that happens or? It is kind of, in, at night, it's remote, you know? So what happens? So, so. You get a.
The grocery store at night is kind of remote. Um, Dillard's is kind of remote. Kohl's is kind of remote. This is a retail-type environment. And so none of the other properties that you would have in a retail environment would have fences or gates around it. We do have the appropriate amount of security relative to lights, cameras, uh, and and such. Uh, certainly, you know, it's appropriate to have the opportunity for police to go by there and look at it or or whatever, but. There are many security features at this particular property uh that would allow us to to have a safe facility.
That's great. I I don't think we have any stores or anything that backs up into Woodsdale. That I can think of, but it's just a concern, right? Um, let's see here. It's not gated. Okay, we talked about that. La 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 la, nothing on the roofs. Yeah, I'm definitely curious to uh get the calculation of on the height. Um. Bear with me. I'm almost done here. Yeah, the whole left turn was the first thing I wrote down. I, I think, you know, F. Is just Route Six. I just worry about the left turn. I know you're working with DOT. It is a, you know, state road. The accidents that, and I know you've mentioned two, that are more towards uh. Like the highway, but the accidents that happen, especially on the pinnacle. They're deadly typically. They're bad because of the speed. Um, I think I'm okay. And Shannon, am I too far from Pinnacle?
So, just, so here's. I'll zoom back in. So the property eight, one, two, two.
Yeah.
Uh, eight, one, twenty. So to start to zoom out, that's still kind of the center of your screen. And you can see, so here's the hill coming up in Pinnacle and Reservoir, so that's that intersection there.
Yeah.
So, uh, it probably, I'm gonna guess. All right, I've got all sorts of toolbars that are messing my up here. As the crow flies, you're, yeah, I was gonna say half, half mile. You're, you're probably half to three-quarters of a mile. Roughly. Roughly, I don't go around the curve, so.
Don't we have a blinking light in that area, or is it again in that wrong spot?
It's at, it's, I believe that we've got the blinker at, at Pinnacle.
Yeah, is it right at?
Yep, all right, never mind.
I take it regularly.
So like, even if like, there was a blinking light here, it. I used to close to the other one.
But again, it, so it, it, it's gonna be dictated, uh. Some of that's traffic volume.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and, and signal warrants, which Mr. Huska spoke to, and it is, it will fall to DOT.
Okay. And so the signage on the road. So like DOT, like, it's nothing to do with town, like, we cannot.
We can offer, just a- as we have with other, um. Uh, other applicants, or, uh, with respect to bypass lanes and return lanes, so certainly if the commission. Wants DOT to consider. Restricting lefts, um, or appropriate signage, um. Then certainly that can be a request. That that be put forth to DOT.
Yeah.
Um, that, that request be, be conveyed, and certainly, uh, DOT typically contacts staff. When they're reviewing, so we could put that forth as well. Uh, that that was a condition. We can't. I, I would caution the commission on restricting.
Mm-hmm.
Again, that's gonna go to DOT to have the final say, but we can certainly, um. You're certainly within your rights to offer your thoughts.
Okay, thank you. All right, that is all I have, thank you, and, uh. Sounds like we have, um, some more.
Well, I think, so.
If we're gonna go.
Well, in public, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it sounds like this will probably continue, right? Because there's more documentation that came in.
Well, there's, we'll wanna confirm at a, a bare minimum the height and see if the applicant chooses to respond to any of your comments regarding. Massing and aesthetics of it.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. All right, we'll turn it over to the public. I'm slowing down a little bit, oh, you have a question, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can I ask one, cuz I was thinking about this. So, the windows, there's, is there shades on the windows?
No shades on the windows.
So. Right, in the winter time, when the sun sets at four thirty or five o'clock, that light will still be visible all the way until nine PM. Is that, is that fair? Okay, thank you.
Just, and, and a note on size, um. Average size for these facilities of this type, uh, range right around eighty thousand, eighty thousand square feet. Uh, and they go upwards of a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, sort of on average, we've seen them as large as. Two hundred and sixty thousand square feet. So the seventy-nine. Eight that we're proposing is, is really about average for this type of facility.
Understood, um, in our town though, what we have is much smaller, we have couple on the bottom of Route six.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, it's, it's definitely a very different scale for our town. We wanna do the right thing and make sure it's safe for everyone.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if, if, if there's any comps in this general area of this type of facility would be helpful for the commission. This one seems larger than what we have in town, yep, yep.
There's, there's one in Plainville, but to your point, Matt, I think it's two stories.
Right.
Same setup.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one further down Route six is.
Yeah, there's a couple.
Right, Brickyard is, I think, one.
Mm-hmm. Uh, I've, the, the retenanting of the one that took place at the intersection of, uh, New Britain Avenue and. Route six is one story.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fairly competent on this one.
Mm-hmm. All right, uh, thank you, all right, so, um, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the room that wishes to speak regarding this application, come on up. Yes, okay, awesome, oh. Thank you for, yeah, come on up, uh, tell us your name and your address, and, uh, thank you so much for hanging out with us all the way.
Mm-hmm.
Till the end, I know, I know, thank you. All right, thank you.
Uh, I'm Charlene Coranian, um, actually, I live in, uh, my address is two thirty-four Steel Street in New Britain, Connecticut.
Um, I'm Armin Michaelak, I used to live on fifteen Dunham Lane, but I moved to. Berlin, cuz I couldn't find a house in Farmington. Twenty-three Iris Way. But we own the property, uh, you've referred to as eighty-one twenty-eight. Old Highway.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, adjacent to this project. And we just have a couple of general questions, um, my one question is, I'm not clear. Are there outdoor units, uh, with the garage doors that open or not?
There are, I don't remember how many, but there are some on the backside.
Okay, she's curious.
I think there's like thirteen, oh yeah, they're, they're accessible, I can't see them from, from.
Okay, thank you.
John. Um, another question I wanted to ask is. Uh, how far is the water connection going to be coming down? Would it be like the first driveway, I mean, the northern driveway, then?
Yeah, at the end.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, well, yes, we do.
If you, uh, address all your comments and then the, the applicant will respond.
Thank you, yeah, keep going though, thank you.
Keep asking our questions, okay.
Um. I, I did ask this before the meeting, but I, I, I'm not sure if I understand how it came to be. Um, the, the map that went out with the notice. Um, had the two hundred foot buffer. Um, dot, you know, like the dash dotted line around the property. Um, I, I was still trying to figure out, though, why there was that on the left side. That bar swinging out corner, cuz it was way beyond two hundred feet, it's more like six hundred feet, I just didn't understand that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Um. He asked him about the lighting, so I was fine with that.
You're awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, really, we really appreciate it. All right, how about online, Shannon, is there anyone online?
Uh, if anyone has called in online to offer a comment to the commission regarding the. Uh, Bulwark Storage Facility application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone has called in to offer comment on the Bulwark Storage Facility application on Colt Highway, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And you'll be agn- acknowledged to address the commission. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
All right. Sounds good, um, is it okay to answer the couple of questions?
Yeah.
Wow, this lady said that.
Okay, so, I mean. Actually, these are really, uh, questions for Dave Ziyex, first of all, the question about the water coming down, David. Uh, how, how you're extending it, and I assume they wanna know whether it's gonna be in front of their property.
Um, Dave Ziyex, uh, the water main will be coming in from, uh, from the east, uh, like we said, it's about. Halfway across the frontage of the, uh, two ninety-nine apartments. And, uh, it will be coming up to our main driveway and then stopping there, so our, our middle driveway, it'll be coming up that far. And it'll stop there. Uh, the, 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 uh, line on the zone map. Is, we lovingly refer to as a AutoCAD mess up, uh, it's, it goes too far. But it doesn't add a property or delete a property. Um. I think that's it, yeah, I, I want, I want, did wanna make a comment, uh, particularly, uh, related to Madam Chairman, um. Uh, I can assure you that at least from our professional point of view, both Scott and myself, working in the office, we do a lot of work on Route four, Route six. Things of that nature over the years. And when the, when, uh, the applicants first came to us and talked about this particular property, I, I know I drove by it about three thousand times, but I couldn't, just couldn't picture it in my mind very well. So my first reaction was, well, I don't know about, you know. Additional driveways at this location and things like that, so we spent a, a great deal of time. Analyzing this before we, we did anything, just to wish, make sure that in our minds that we could provide a safe driveway. Uh, particularly with sightline distances. And, you know, through analysis, and I mean, we've convinced ourselves, I think we've got a good product. Um, and that's why we came up with this driveway design was, you know. A, a car or two every once in a while wants to make a left-hand turn out at the main driveway. Uh, I'm not that, really that concerned about it, other than that, it's, it's a nasty little place from time to time. Um, but you know what's interesting, I went, when I went, I put out, I put public hearing sign up, you know, back a couple of weeks ago, whatever it was. And I, I, I noticed it again, I parked across the street over near where the Tilkon excavation is, actually a little bit of a pull-off that you can park there safely.
You ran across Route six?
But you know what, there's a gapping there.
Okay.
There is a gapping there because you've got the traffic light down at. Uh, in front of, of the, uh, hotel, and, and then you have the other traffic lights further on Route six. So there are time periods when it is really dead quiet there, i- it's amazing, it's, you just have to, there's no computer analysis that, that will, that. You just have to go stand there. And if you're just a little patient, there's, there are plenty of opportunities, especially with the big sightline distances that we're providing. That you can safely make a left-hand turn out there. You know, could you make a miscalculation or whatever, possibly, but there, i- it's not a, a hopeless situation, there are plenty. There are opportunities to make a left-hand turn, but I was mostly concerned about people coming out. With, uh, you know, vans or a rental U-Haul thing or something like that, and having to make that turn. And that's why we introduced this clock, this one-way circulation, and you gotta come out. And yeah, you might have to travel a little distance to make a U-turn to do that, but there's plenty of those around that, you just have to deal with that. So anyhow, just to, and to, to reinforce that, you know, we spent, before I even got involved in the project, cuz I was willing to say, no, that's not gonna happen. We spent a great deal of time trying to figure this thing out.
Great, thank you. Thank you. All right. Go ahead, sorry.
No, that's just it, um, with that, we, you know. Got your comments and we will definitely work with town staff and. See if we can. Come up with some answers that might make you more comfortable, if some of you seem comfortable, some of you not quite so. But I just wanna leave you with one thought, and that is. This is a de minimis operation on that site, yes, it's a lot of units, but the use itself. Well, you said it very well, you haven't been back to your storage unit in four years.
My husband goes.
Oh, your husband goes, okay, you have, well, then that may be different, but the point is. The amount of traffic that's gonna be generated from this, once it's full up, is really quite small, and, um. Unless you're going to say the site can't be developed, period. Somebody is going to have to leave a driveway and may either make a left-hand turn or have it designed in such a way that you mostly. Make, uh, turns in the other direction, so. I think we've come up with a plan that really works, given all the constraints, unless you're just gonna say nothing should happen there. No one's gonna build a single-family home there. And so the question is, what other uses are appropriate, given especially the development in the area, unless the site is being condemned, because. Nobody's capable of waiting for that gap to be able to get out safely. Um, you know, we think this is a, a, a good proposal for this location. Um, so with that, we'll continue to work with staff, we'll try to address your concerns and, uh. Wait to hear to what night you're going to continue this, thank you.
Thank you. What night?
Uh, is it, I, we can, we can go with a, uh.
We have enough time if we did the twelve or?
Yeah, we've got a three-week rotation, everybody gets a three-week breather, so the twelfth is up, I know. No one is more happy about than that staff, I assure you.
All right.
So, we're on a three-week rotation to get to the twelfth, so.
Continuing, right.
Hey, let me get to mine, let me get to mine. Pick the glasses off so I can see what I'm doing.
I got my part ready.
Oh, man.
Maybe, maybe I'll have.
We are falling apart here. I'm gonna.
Ten or twelve minutes, I.
I'm gonna hit the gal. Come on, sorry.
Being a little silly, okay, I'd like to make a motion that we continue. Uh, the Bulwark LLC application for change of zone from R eighty to C one. Special permit and site plan approval for construction of a self-storage facility location on lots. Eighty-one twenty and eighty-one twenty-two Colt Highway, across from. Four to four Colt Highway, continued till June. Twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All, all in favor? Uh, opposed, okay, we are continuing, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Little pause. But it's a little.
We are, we are.
All right, Shannon.
I guess, say, uh, no, there's no planners' report items, unless somebody has a question for me.
Just a quick one.
Yes, of course.
The Sager Development, that good, it's. But, um, over by East Farms.
Yes, it did, the chief of funding, and I've got building permits are on my credenza.
Okay, so that's.
Cause I was.
Starting.
I was waiting for something, but yeah, no, the building, building permits are in, and, uh, they've actually started to do some of the wetland mitigation. So some of the invasive species removal was done before we fully leafed out. Um, when it was a little easier to get in there and do that work.
Okay, yeah, I thought I had read that, but I hadn't seen it.
Exciting.
Last time I went, I know.
Affordable housing.
It is.
Yes.
And that is.
I, I, I just have one, uh, uh, as you know, when trees start getting cut down in town, people start asking what's going on, so. The, as you know, I'm sure, the, the McCallum Building property.
Very quiet over there.
Um.
Nothing, nothing going on, what is anything?
Um, just curious, I, I know that what they were waiting for DOT, and it looks like a lot more trees have been removed, at least. Just curious.
Uh, so they are still working with DOT.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, their latest submission was on just earlier this month, I took a copy of it. Uh, we've had some public inquiry regarding that, so, uh, DOT. At the driveways, DOT has gone back and forth, there's been quite a dialogue back and forth between the applicant, their engineer and DOT regarding. The need for dedicated left turn lanes versus bypass lanes. Um.
Hmm.
So what they've. What is currently on the table are bypass lanes at each of the three driveways. Um, the issue, part of the issue, I believe, and I have not been on all the correspondence by any means. Obviously, there's only so much room to the north, right?
Right, yeah.
Cause then we get, you can see it over my shoulder, we get a little wet, uh, to the north.
Yeah.
So, um, so they're looking at bypass lanes, they've done survey, uh, it will re- require resetting that metal beam guide rail there to get the sufficient width. So they're still with DOT, uh, any of the tree clearing they've been in to talk to us about, so we've been on the property. Uh, quite a bit over the last, say, three to four weeks. Um, even the work that's been on the embankment and down towards, um, the river itself.
Yep.
And that area has been reseeded. Uh, we're watching for erosion control, watching for upland review limits, so we are paying attention at the current moment. Um, the staff has been working extensively with. The owner and the applicant, you'll recall, there are two different entities involved. Uh, regarding getting easements in place, so there are five sets of easement documents that need to be in place, um. There's a trail easement, a sidewalk easement, there's a mutual access easement, conservation and sewer easement. Um, some of them have been easier to work through than others.
Sure, understood. Re- remind me again when. The rail trail work would be done at the beginning or the end, or?
Um, so that work would be done towards the start of the project. Um, again, some of that fill material is being used on the property in order to get the finished floor elevations. Uh, Farmington has a little higher than standard. Floor elevation requirement in this particular area adjacent to the river.
Okay.
So some of that material is, uh, anticipated to be used on site.
Got it, great, thank you.
Certainly.
So continue using the bike trail for now.
It is, it's, it's open and it'll be posted, we, there's been, uh, quite a few discussions on timing, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, thank you.
None of them are perfect, right, and of course, it's gotta be done while the pavement plants are still open, because the trail has to be paved.
Yeah, right.
So we, we can't just do it in December, January, February, so at some point, it's gonna be offline. At a less than ideal time for some portion of the community, and, um. We will be tackling that as it comes.
Oh, no doubt.
Do it, and make sure some.
Any questions for Shannon?
We appreciate your service on that.
No problem, okay.
All right, good, thank you.
Okay, okay.
Hold on, slow down.
So, work, work session, we will, so June, well, I've got, again, with the three weeks, there are no new. Public hearings for June, so. We're, be prepared for the June meeting, please, and I will endeavor to, uh, get some. Worthwhile information so that we can start to have some dialogue, also the gentleman, Mr. Galvin, who had.
Yes.
His comments on ADU.
Yes.
I'll get, resurrect that, so that'll be part of the conversation. On the, uh, for June twelfth as well.
In the meantime, let's approve that minutes from May eighth.
Make a motion to approve the May eighth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And, uh, Mike Pauls. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.